Welcome to our whole board meeting. It's October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Um, I'm happy to be happy to have you all here. Um, back and we have the roll call.
Hey, Liz Barrett. Pitt Blues. Lisa Rafford.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Argo P. Taylor.
Here.
Hope Bennett.
Here.
Brian Rich.
Here.
Karen O'Bea.
Here.
Danielle Malaskey Drew.
Here.
Nick Sudra.
Here.
Okay, can we offer the dance? That's officially soon by the United States. To the public, which is one nation, one God, and it's love, they're treating it as. Open the announcements. Victory.
I'm more than I was like this.
Welcome, thank you. Um, okay, announcements, recognition, back to your.
Yeah, just a couple. I would just say, and I kind of brought it, it kind of brought it. Uh, but I just wanted to really thank, uh, staffs. And particularly building leadership, but staffs in connection, you know, PTA videos. Um. It's really clear over the last couple of weeks, what a, what a really outstanding job. Uh, our teams around. Really thinking about the social emotional aspect of schooling and really about when the kids and families feel. Feel part of this. And making school, doing the things that school want. Uh, and our, our team is doing a great, some job doing that. Uh, and it's nice to see it available back in the flow. Yes, the academics, yes, in that. But this stuff is so crucial for what happens in schools. Uh, and it's the, um, the C R, school community partnering so well together, together. So, you know, that's a lot of different individual events that happen in preschool, which is going to. Uh, uh, they are saying today that, um, middle school, uh, D H S has gone through their homecoming. Uh, stuff. So we have a lot of events where, where students are out interacting with each other and interacting. Uh, you can see kind of the joy coming back to this thing review. Uh, and it's nice to meet them in that way, but that's not happening in the state people doing that. So, so I think, right?
Well, thank you. That's good news. Uh, does anyone else have an announcement? I, I had one tomorrow night. If anyone doesn't want to stay home and go out. The citywide neighborhood, um, committee, and Laco did it for us last month. Uh, they invited the school department to be part of their panel when they do their award meetings. Um, five times a year, they go to awards. And the school manager is there, the police chief, the fire chief, the department, the fireworks, the rice. And have invited the school board to not be on the panel. So tomorrow night it's at six thirty at Franklin. It's Ward One. So if anyone wants to come, I'm going to be there tomorrow night making a brief presentation about the school department and particularly emphasizing. You went with, with.
Ward five.
No, Ward three, sorry. I've worn that. Okay. So, um, it's just an interesting dialogue with citizens and somebody wants a new sidewalk and somebody wants. You know, you know, whatever, something about stuff like that, but it will be kind of fun to be part of that in a number of forums. No, we don't.
I think a lot. Yeah, I didn't miss Ward five. I didn't know it had happened, so I'll try to get the load down. I guess it can happen in some classroom.
Yeah.
Great question. Yeah.
So, um, so that's the citywide neighborhood. Yes.
Um, so our boys varsity soccer team has made it to playoffs and those are happening here tonight. Six thirty at Bedford High. They're cheering along. They might want to. Going along or you can see them on YouTube, I think. I won't promise that, but they have been doing the YouTube viewing of the games for home games and, um. Sure.
And I think it's the girls lacrosse team.
Well, the girls final, the girls varsity sock is also soccer, soccer is also going, but I don't know if their game is tomorrow night or if they start. Do you know when they start? I know they start this week. Their tournament's this week, but I'm not exactly sure they'd be. So I'm sure can be found probably on.
Yeah, so get to that time of year where the playoffs happen and it's kind of exciting. Yes, and back.
Hi, Alana. Good news. I just want to give a shout out to Nate Watten, our choir director for the middle school and high school. For the first time since before the pandemic, had several area C coast choirs. All on the stage at P A test. It was absolutely incredible. The kids did a great job. And it was like yet another moment. It was a lot of work. I had to get into teaching them all how to be on stage again. And, uh, it was pretty wonderful to see.
Oh, thank you.
It was a packed house.
Really.
Really great.
Okay, so we move on. Uh, acceptance of minutes, October eleventh, twenty twenty two. I already go in the evening. Um, do we have a, uh, motion? Second and very. All those favor pimp any?
Any?
Yeah. Early.
No, counting heads for the votes.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. So, uh, motion accepted?
Yes.
Public comment. Do we have anyone here for a public comment tonight? Do we have anyone on Zoom for a comment? No, we just need one person. They have recently. Okay. All right. Well, thank you all for the fine presentations. We're very honored. We have Bill Vegas with us tonight.
And I was going to say, there's one change too from our original agenda. We're going to have, we're going to have a first round of, uh, building program. Tonight, and Courtney Richards, unfortunately, is not being able to do this. Uh, and we will be scheduled for, uh, by the time, but we do have, um, space here for, uh.
Well, I thought it was going to be second, so still warming up.
Yo, come on.
I, you know, I, I do try to say that when I get in front of you because. It's not lost on me that I get paid to do this. And your volunteers, uh, giving a clap for this, that's back to the community and students and enforcement. So thank you very much. And then doing that on top of, uh, schools pretty best as well. So, you know, I've got, uh, the, uh, board report, uh, filled out as, as, as handed to us. I did, somebody said, like a middle schooler, uh, realized today when I printed this out that I submitted my draft. Uh, so what you say is that new draft, so I don't like to have, uh, grammatical errors and that sort of thing in there as some of the. Bullets are actually talking points that, in any case, you have a little bit of what I was, uh, expecting to share. Um, but we'll get through this. So, um, starting off successes at the middle school. To Zach's point, we've got, um, some return to normalcy, I think, from the start of the year this year. Uh, really, really high numbers of extracurricular involvement. We've got, I believe, four hundred and ninety seven students enrolled at the middle school. And, um, you know, a hundred and seventy one in fall athletics. We've got a hundred and twenty two doing separate club. Activities, anything from, uh, kind of a chess club to Dungeons and Dragons to, uh, uh, a newspaper. Lots of different activities going on and students staying after school to be involved in that, which is, just feels good, right? To have, uh, kids wanting to be part of their community. And one of our goals. Really is to work in our success, uh, class within our homerooms to try to find a spot for all students to have some sort of involvement. Um, and this is the great start. Um, ski club already, we can, we have the biggest ski club in the state, uh, with two hundred kids signed up. Gun stock, actually, uh, we've worked, worked very closely with them. Uh, and they tried to limit and cap off the size this year. It's a thing we're not going to allow groups as large as ours. It should make so much sense to me, given the profits that they surely made of the sports in middle school. Uh, but they agreed to, to push it and allow us to do this. So it's, uh, it's great to see that the numbers there. And as always, it's one of those things that piles on. So you've got, you're, you're a hundred and fifty sign up and then, oh, you're doing it. I want to do it type thing. And it's, it's a middle school, right? So, uh, some of that, your breath here to go become a skier exists, um, which I love. Um, one of our focuses this year is just on academics. I. Uh, spoke to the staff early in the year and said, you know, we focus so much for the last three years on social emotion, social emotions. Enveloping students really and catering them through the last couple of years. Um, not that academics was lost, but I just kind of wanted teachers staff, uh, to. Say, okay, yeah, what, why are we here initially? Uh, it's to get these students from point A to point B academically. And so let's, uh, kind of drill down on that. Uh, while I'm not forgetting that we're still, you know, ushering individuals through some of the toughest years in development. Uh, as middle school. So we're, we're really trying to, the focus on, um, some of our data on, on star testing. Uh, we found an avenue. Without printing out five hundred pieces of paper every time, actually a thousand is two different tests, but, uh, to share that data with parents. They sign up, they can give us feedback on their child's star reports. We didn't use that for response to intervention, reading math writing. So that a student who is, uh. It could be a student with an I P, but a student without an I P can get those supports, um, within their school day. Uh, typically three out of six of the days, uh, can bump them back up and out, uh, specifically nine week sessions could be longer. It'd be an entire school year or so. We've also finally, uh, after a question for probably about five years, uh, have. Algebra one being offered, uh, to some students at the middle school, uh, for high school credit. We had an algebra one course previously, uh, but there were about six different topics that, that we weren't able to get to. Uh, so we did not get paid for the high school credit. Uh, we worked with the high school. Um, to identify those and then offer a summer course, uh, for those students who are identified so that they can do that pre-work. Um, hit those six targets and then those topics and they're just off like a shot through the school year. And, and doing well, most of them. I'll speak to that a little bit later as well. Um, additional reading specialists, thank you very much. Um, it's nice to have, uh, a. Reading specialist on special education realm. Uh, and then we have a reading specialist who's working with those R T I students. And it, it makes it so that we don't have to so much say, well, this one, they're greater than this one's reading needs. So this one doesn't get it until this one, uh, puts it out of the program. Uh, so we're really able to meet. More students, uh, needs to, to work to get them up to the best of their ability, which we hope is very level, but not always for everybody. And then we're working on, uh, some initiatives to get literacy across the area. So we're, uh, part of our time on, uh, November eighth. Staff, if you're listening, this is part of what we're doing on, on November eighth. You're going to be working with, uh, the English language arts department. To look at their writing rubrics, um, and so we can have a progression of, we can, writing content is thought six, seven, eight. And they were spiral around. They don't just do it once, but they'll, they'll continue on that. Um, but then so that in a science or social studies class, they can use that same teaching strategy, same rubrics. And then place content on top of it. So students that may have, uh, a sponsor or any same piece. Uh, that they, they worked on sixth grade, learning the exactly how to write that piece. And then except in the eighth grade, they'll have regular examples of that, but in the, so it's one of the pieces we've been working towards, uh, the last couple of years. Uh, brings pieces into motion this year. In the realm of social emotional, you know, something that, um, again, I feel that Portland middle school has done a fantastic job the last several years. And we have, um. We have a sign of suicide. It's an act program, act of air tell, um, that we've been doing primarily with seventh graders for the last many years. And, um, well, if those few of them, they not be surprised to realize that if you tell something, if somebody wants the seventh grade, they may not remember. Uh, so reiterating those lessons, we've kind of purchased that license to, uh, be able to repeat that lesson six, seven, eight. So all students will get those signs and suicide lessons. And it's not just. You know, uh, signs of suicide for myself, but it's more of how to speak to a friend. How to make recommendations because, you know, in those unfortunate circumstances, a lot of times they are peers who know about this things personally. And looking, finding those signs and, and reach out and help, um, to adults. So. It's important work, really important work. Uh, and then on that realm as well, we have students still utilizing, uh, this counselor request form. But all students, uh, have access to just a Google form, but it's right out there that all students have. Uh, and so it's not so much that, you know, I'm struggling with something. I don't have to raise my hand, talk to the teacher, explain that I need to go see a counselor. And that's hurt right there for a lot of things. On the Chromebook, you know, make requests to counselors. Counselor will get that, look at that every day. They call a student down, depending on, you know, pretty. So a lot of things going well in the middle school, uh, and there are more, but, uh, we do have some challenges, uh, as well. And so we go to the next section. I think some of the biggest challenges are things that are a little bit out of my control, uh, but busing is one of the largest challenges. And so, uh, with busing, we have, uh. Only, we probably had to about ten times this year that one of our buses had actually made school on time. Um, and, you know, it's not, they're coming tremendously late. They're making it by the time period one starts, but students are missing first period. Um, and although it sounds silly, they're, they're missing, you know, the pledge allegiance and announcements. Uh, they're also missing that first opportunity to get breakfast. And for some students, that's, you know, incredibly important, uh, but it's, it's, it was. Noted by them, but, you know, I'm out there every morning, so that we have to actually manually open the doors for them, let them in. And the first day that they came in and actually heard the announcements for the sixth grader, it's kind of, this is how the day starts. And that's sad, you know, to see kids kind of rushing their way in the doors and, you know, it's a driver's problem. Um, it's not, you know, of course, it's blame driver, parents blame driver, they blame me, whatever else, although people have been, they've been. Pretty darn good about it. Uh, shortage of drivers, um, and also a little bit too much compressed time when we, uh, elementary. Start time and middle school start time is the same buses are doing. As soon as they drop off elementary. They're circling back around and everybody's hanging on middle school, high school, and then quickly trying to drop off to us and. Still a little too compressed. So it's been, it's been difficult to watch for students who you know just. Want to be there on time, want to start today, right? Uh, so it's been a huge challenge in the afternoon. Getting better. Um, our, we get out at three ten. Our last bus today was there at three twenty six. Um, and that's a little early for that last class. And so it's been. In a school this time of year, not so bad. They're hanging around outside. They're having fun. They're talking to friends. Uh, but again, just having that. Synchronicity dismissal, everybody gets out. It's just the expected norms of school, uh, goes a long ways. So that, that's been a real challenge. And I think Tim Bush, assistant principal. Can speak a little bit more to it in the afternoon because I'm kind of out front talking to parents, but they come in, drive, pick up kids and he's around the side of the buses. Uh, another, uh, challenge that I've seen is the challenge of resilience. Um, and there's, you know, coming off of the pandemic, there's, uh. Some real difficulties for resilience. Um, and I'll say that I think, you know, every family has their own. Uh, challenges. They have their own situations. Um, and I think in Portsmouth, and this is not a scientific study by any means. But I think somewhere lower income students are actually more resilient and have had an easier time bouncing out of COVID impact into things. Um, and some of our students who've had, uh, kind of parents protecting and, and plowing away in front of them are really having a difficult time. Um, and then I will say at the same time, I've seen this year more parents having a difficult time. Uh, being resilient, two changes and just small. We see people's, but small things that, that typically be explained away and, uh, parents sometimes going from zero to sixty at the drop of hat. Without, without wanting an explanation first, but just charging ahead. And, you know, always I, I can talk my way through things with, with people and, and they'll, they'll listen and explain, but it's, um. People are ready to jump and it's in a comfortable place to be. It's a healthy spot, I think, in our community sometimes, and I see it a little bit more in the adults right now. It's, um, that's a, that's a change. I hadn't seen that in the past. And I'm not exactly sure, although I've talked about what to do. We've got, uh, some difficulties, so a lot of good, um, I think some folks saw the, the posting that came out after our first dance and. Really, you know, I think what we need to do is look at a little bit differently. For babies or kids that were sheltered and excluded from large gatherings about going to this, uh, and all of a sudden we're going to. Eat students, uh, soda, pizza, uh, in a dark room with a lot of people running around at a dance and shouldn't really be a surprise in retrospect. It's like people are going to work with that. Uh, so we're kind of looking at how, how can we restructure social opportunities for students? Uh, maybe by a very level, uh, maybe by just finding what's offered, uh, we call it, I think, it's social. Uh, so maybe there's some jam time, maybe there's movie group, maybe there's some video games and just kind of giving people the space away from. Uh, the loud noise, which some is what we need and, and what, but. Uh, so we, and, you know, it's not terrible. We made our way out, but, uh, most answers are interesting. Not my favorite thing, but I can always walk away with it. Yes. We did it for the kids. It was good for the kids and I can take one of the kids to this one. But. So it was the word. So as far as work on the school board, uh, goals. On the equity piece, uh, we've always been trying to get this eighth grade, uh, algebra one to it. And once we opened it up and we started to go out of the chair and, and it was by teacher recommendation based on. Uh, performance of class, some evaluations, start testing data, SAS data, none of them. Including entirely a student, but they, you know, the bomb is ass bomber, but some of this, uh, they started testing and then you get, we'll, I think, the recommendation behind class. But after we were halfway through the summer and underway, and I thought, well, we really should be opening this up to any student who wants to take the challenge up. And have some cut points. So if you're a seventh grader and maybe you didn't like your teacher, maybe you had a rough year or whatever, but if you think you do it out for one. You want to put in the time to do those six units over the summer. Let's go for it. And, and so we're working on kind of pulling out those stops and, and seeing. Allowing the floodgates in, and I don't think it'll be tremendous floodgates really for seventh graders to say, yes, I want to do more math over the summer. But there will be signs, uh, that'll look to step up that challenge in sort of. To open that up. I think it's an equity piece, um, explaining to students that, that there is that opportunity. Um, but then again, having that. Reality pieces, that if you're not at this point by this time. Then you're not going to do well in a class and it is high school. We're talking about, so what about? A point in time where you come back to, you're just going to be a great level class. Um, and then the, you know, the D R T I tiered arrangements for all parents spoke about, makes a huge equity piece. Um, ensuring and putting those checks in place to make sure that people are doing, uh, well in school. And then I mean, guidance counselors in that process, school psychologists doing that process. And somebody is not, you know, it may not be a reading issue, it may be something at home or, or. School social worker has been a fantastic addition, at least two of us, and able to drill down and work within the tools as well. Working with the community and the P T A, um, when it's particularly thinking about. You know, when I spoke about one of the difficulties with parents, uh, I wouldn't say difficulties with parents, but with some of the stressors in families, it seems. And how do we create, it's always a problem in a middle school, an opportunity for volunteers to come in when. The girl, seventh, third, grade, or a girl, our student does not want to see mom and dad in school, right? I remember my mom, my own mother volunteered at school dances and it was, I was not going here. They, the stack down at all and couldn't pay me or. So we're looking at maybe some community events. Who coached a lot, uh, baseball and soccer over the years. And one of the more fun things at the end is always when, uh, the. Parents play against the kids. I thought, well, geez, if we had, uh, a game where the parents are against the kids, whether it be soccer or. Dodgeball or whatever it is, then the kids have a chance to show that they really are better. Uh, and it may be better. And so that, that may be some kind of fun community event type things, um, that we can, so we're working with that with the P T A. I think that will. You know, bring the fun side out, bring parents into the school, kind of build that trusting relationship. If it's not there already. One fantastic success, I probably should have had it up a little higher, but, um. We had the eighth grader trip up to Mount Major. We do have, uh, a couple of students in the school, one, an eighth grader who's wheelchair bound. Uh, and worked with Northeast Passage to, they've got a, you know, wheelchair that's like an all terrain beast of a machine. Uh, and so they met us up there and got the student up the mountain, uh, in a little bit of a slower pace. But at the point when we were coming back down, a bunch of major graders wanted to, can we help? And, and they, for a ways, we're, we're pushing this kid up, up, and it was just everything you want to see. You know, you've got, uh, a real sense of community. You've got kids looking out for each other. And I felt like the big chart in the end, I said. We gotta turn around because it's different attention. So I couldn't let that group go all the way to the summit, otherwise. Busing would have really been our end that day. Uh, but just really good stuff, uh, to see that going on. And that's, you know, naturally letting kids be good, like, because they are. Uh, sometimes it's our own instincts. In the other direction. So we've got. Uh, we're continuing with our social emotional activities, uh, our social emotional learning activities and success block. Uh, so Matt Mitchell, one of our. E E teachers, he runs group activities. It's a lot of team building, problem solving. Um, and he insists that the teachers are in there with the group doing it. Um, and he. What would be when we developed it and said, I won't do it. Teachers are going to sit and email or be on the side and not be in there in the group with the kids. So that's been a really successful thing where you'll have four or five, uh, groups, each of, of twelve students. Uh, working with the teacher on these different challenges. And so that kind of team building and it has value beyond, you know, just getting people through, uh, what, what it may look like. We have some. Groups that have, they're psycho educational skills groups, uh, that are starting out. We've identified students who may benefit from. Um, so there's anxiety, anxiety management group. Anger learning skills that we call fight, but on the side, but it's not. Interpersonal relationships and emotional regulation, executive functioning group, uh, problem solving, decision making group. And then, uh, mental health and healthy habits group. So identifying those students that would benefit, again, since the work of our social worker. And one of our counselors, uh, so that we can create this other. They did some work over the summer to really develop about, uh, six, six week or nine, nine week. Unit for each of those. So it's, um. Pretty exciting to see how that unfolds. Um, and we had a speaker that some folks we have heard of, Cam Awesome, who's a retired Olympic boxer, uh, tells his story. Uh, and just had the kids glued with their attention to his story and talking about, uh, such community belonging. Uh, inspiration, sticking with and motivation. And so we're working with some of his quotes and I have some lessons to dovetail on that. Throughout the rest of the year. We look at. Things that may have, uh, budget implications, uh, on the year. I'm, I'm not really looking at staffing. I'm not really looking at, usually think, think one of the biggest ones again is going to that busing piece. Uh, busing is not cheap, talking about additional buses, you're going to have to, their drivers. Uh, but really it's a shift in times that may be most beneficial, um, between the elementarys and the middle and the high school. Um, and it's something that when we took that look. Four or five years ago, and we did the time shift, uh, in the day. We initially started with double runs. I'm sorry, not double runs, but we had high schoolers with elementary school students all on the same bus. And we talked about having monitors in place. Um, the following year, um, I think we had those additional buses in place even. We kind of didn't have high schoolers and elementary school students so much together, and we started to run into these issues of timing. And then COVID happened and I think I forgot that that was even a thing. And then coming back out of COVID, um, I believe. We're cut buses. But we are, but we're still taking on the, still too tight on our, our timelines and it just. Uh, it's not working. So one of the questions, you know, that I don't have the date on this, uh, but I wonder, you know, our, what is that time shift? Is that a greater benefit, um, to middle school students? And I don't know the answer to that. I know some folks say no, some folks say yes, but. Uh, I think we need a little that. Not sure what budget implications that may have, uh, probably not as much as just adjusting clocks and things, but I think it has to be done. Shockingly, we're seeing, uh, few students breaking computers, not intentionally, uh, but the biggest problem seems to be students carrying their laptop from the corner. Laptop from the corner, uh, and then, you know, the. Where it starts peeling out or things, it's a misuse of equipment, uh, that we're trying to work with middle schoolers to understand. That these are not just throwaway devices. Um, so that's just, it's gonna be replaced and then I don't know what the budget line looks like on that, but it's gonna. It's gonna continue to be a thing, um, with every student that I can come up with. Uh, and then, um, facilities, we've got. Some flooring that probably needs to be replaced in our cafeteria where we have a green flooring product that, uh, does not withstand. Water or stress, uh, as well as some of the other products do. And it's, you know, we've got. More piles that are almost, they're rotting into it and a building that's as new as it is. It shouldn't be. We've replaced them several times, but there's a couple areas where there's leaking and it's. In the, continuous problems. Um, I think all the building probably have some leaking on flat roof in New England. Um, and, and Ken's good about getting people out there to, to look at it, work on it. Uh, but there's, you know. The, it's got implications for water damage. It's, it's a problem. Um, I know. Ken and I talked about replacing sidewalks in front of the school. They're all paper sidewalks and we saw plow those annually. And we talked about it first last year and it's kind of said, when some of these are starting to fall apart, they're, they're concrete. Or blocks which don't do well with salt and watching them very quickly during the year. So, uh, they're gonna need to be replaced. I think we've got some, some steps in the nineteen thirties building, uh, that are, that are patched together. There you're saying, okay, it's got somebody, uh, out the other day and looking at those, replacing those, um. Replacing cameras, um, but they're. The system, uh, they're, they're poor cameras that were put in. So some, some visibility issues, the newer cameras that we're getting are, are much nicer. Zoom in, see things a little bit more clearly. Um, and then. These wins lately, I keep seeing shingles. When you take a long view out from the building and see missing shingles on, on top and another. Eric pointed that out to me today. Uh, you know, you're missing some shingles on the roof. Yes, I know, but those are, they're kind of big ticket, ticket items. They're not cheap. I know Ken's aware of them. Um, but those are certainly budgetary items. Um. So maybe, maybe not actually for another reading teacher, but I think in rooms would be a good thing. Um, lastly, on that, uh. Future plan planning is, uh, for our conferences, the middle school, uh, we've gone through several different models. And, and really what we kind of settled on is we like that midyear conference. So we've got, um, a little bit of depth of how students are doing. We can meet with parents, uh, and involve students, different grade levels and different levels, uh, student involvement, but, um. We kind of maybe asked last year and it, it fell off the side of the, whoever makes the, uh, calendar. But having that ninety day off for middle school conferences while the high school does their change of work classes, uh, perhaps we'll be able to have a conference day at that point. Um, really makes a lot of sense for what works best for us. And then we've kind of compromised this year what we'll be doing. After is, if that midyear, like high school is, uh, doing exam days, which works, we can do it that way. Uh, but it's, it's gonna be built in, scaled from there. We're gonna start, we're gonna start here. Lastly, you know, it's supposed to be in ten minutes. I always do this. I just go and get it out. Um, so we are rewriting our health curriculum. Uh, we've, we've worked, um. With Haven the last many years, uh, when we onboarded the new, uh, PE teacher. Um, who's asking already if we can, if we can take a look at some of this stuff, but and when Haven, uh, didn't have the ability to work this way. For example, then, uh, our team, it's like, we can do this. And to be honest, in many ways, rather have, uh, teachers who work with kids. Day in, day out, but some of these really difficult topics. Um, and so we're now, you know, we'll be including sexual harassment, bullying, media matters, healthy choices. All in our, uh, bill, health curriculum, which is, you know, to be able to adapt that curriculum and be flexible is really important. As things change often quickly. Um, yeah. And then, and then changing our advanced math, uh, so it's open to all students. So in a lot of words, that's my, uh, that's my update quotes, uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. You have a very comprehensive, interesting, the first of all. In your staff. Okay. I think Lisa's first. Oh, Brian and Carrie. I think Brian's. Right. All right. Go ahead, Lisa. Okay.
I just have a quick question about algebra one in terms of this summer. I love the idea of that being open to any kid who might be themselves. So I wonder if you can say a little bit about. How that's reaching any kid, like with any computer access? Are we giving them books? I'm just curious. How we're addressing that equity piece, because especially in the summer, not all of them would have, you know. Right. Working parents at home to be like, I'd love to sit with you and do not homework these weeks.
It's pretty, it's, it's pretty impressive, uh, what, what we have. Um, so the Nicole Lavin and Val Howard. Two eighth grade teachers, they've got a series of YouTube lessons with QR codes and worksheets. So you can pick up the worksheet. Pack it and do it all there, but there's a QR code at the top that'll take you to the YouTube lesson of exactly how to do that. Watch a million times. Will lend out a computer if you want to borrow a computer, uh, you can do it on a cell phone. A lot of students have, uh, but then they also have, uh, work sessions throughout the summer. So if somebody needs, you know, they can come in on such, such days. Uh, so they do practice the students and they, you know, a student could wait until the last two weeks of summer and crank through those six units. Um, or they, most of them kind of pick away at it really, I guess, uh, is what they saw this year, but they can, the, the teacher will kind of say, hey. Lisa, have you started yet? Uh, and so it, just to see the way they developed the lessons was really impressive. And that's. Kind of part of the practice anyway, uh, that teams, um, but it's working.
Brian.
Uh, yeah, thanks. My girls are enjoying their time here at sixth grade. Um, but I had more question probably for you is at some point, can we, and we're, a lot of this testing is being done. And maybe a future, um, time we could look at, like across the district, star and a few other, the other. Standardized stuff. Um, and the other question was for Nate, Nathan. Do we have more buses yet?
Sorry. So I didn't have a report for tonight, but I've been texting with Nicole for the last ten minutes. Stay true. Stay with me, please. It's a long night. She reports that they, we do have two new drivers coming on. One. She claims this Thursday will have a route and the second one, two weeks out. She has two more currently in training. Uh, one actually walked in yesterday and is in doing the intake paperwork, but that's, you still got to put three plus months on the training cycle. But she is hopeful that they'll be fully staffed as we approach the new year. Um. So that was quick catch. She's certainly aware of the impacts. Um, she's apologetic in that message that getting. It certainly adds to the mix that we can, uh, continue to ramp up, uh, the impact of community campus blessing, uh, as well as some of the other national school programs that we've supported. So she's willing to try certain, she's claiming she tried some on, some alternatives and some ideas, but the reality is that. It'll help when she has more bodies, more buses.
Yeah, and Nicole's awesome. She is, she's a can do person that. You're stuck without people driving and, and the intake processes, fingerprinting and training, but she's, uh, pretty fantastic.
Now, so still, why eat rec? Um, we're still trying to respond to, I think, the conversation we had in the summer, which is like. Let's provide families and kids that they are being canceled, trying to do that, but then. So a lot of buses that we have, we anticipate for our normal routes. Uh, and I know I, I just sat with the, the city's, um, group on ARBA. What they're doing with the ARBA. The main suggestion I had to them from the school's perspective was, you know, whatever you can do in relation to. Creating more rec-based transportation options to community campus. That then frees us up and to burn our muscles back to where we like to go. Uh, I don't know that that's going to lead to anything, uh, but it's, it's less complicated for. For rec to bring on additional transportations, less hoops for them to go through. And so that would one dialogue. So, so we'll, ultimately, we're gonna have more buses. That's gonna, that's a problem. But I think long term, there's, there's a structural question about. Supporting programming at community campus through the rec and, and how robust is our transportation and. Or backing for that, for what every school one of us that runs out at the end of the school day to community campus. I think, do we have the ability to do that in a way that doesn't have Ted and Phil standing out in front of the, you know, middle school song that's active? So those are all things, uh, that we're gonna have to evaluate as we, as we, uh, as we get into budget stuff. But right now, it's not a matter of. You haven't provided funds for us to do this. We're working with the vendor, doesn't have the ability to pull it off of that. And then. Nicole and Phil saying, it's, it's just the whole environment.
We, we lived, I think we lived with the, with the, um, an untreated, um, real reality. We lived with the, you know, with the, uh, an exceptional opportunity here. We had drivers and we were fine even as I was listening to stories all over the state. We intended to have, we had twelve buses last year. We intended thirteen by budget per year and we started with nine. So it's. It certainly, certainly buses will help.
Well, I'm sure people see like Manchester, the story that ran out of that. So just there, there are communities around the state where. I was in this position last year in Logan, where I had a call, a robocall, so it certainly wanted to say, hey, bus for sixteen, we don't, we can't get you. Uh, and that was really uncomfortable, should be. And so the fact we're still covering, we're getting kind of sorted and everybody seems good from that.
Oh, so I'm, I'll start with this. Thanks for talking about that. And then I have a couple more questions. Um. I'll apologize now because I'm not really as nice and understanding about the buses because I feel like. When we were talking about community campus, I must have brought up at least six times what could be the logistical demands on busing with community campus. And while we understood that we may have been in a good place, we could see the writing on the wall. Of so many other places not being in a good place that we needed to prepare for that. So I just feel like. We have to prioritize kids getting to school on time first. Before we provide all the, I don't know if it was Brian or someone else, like when did we start providing all the amateur school busing? And I can appreciate that if we're a district that can afford to do that and we're in a situation where we have abundant staffing to do that, fantastic. But if we're not, we have to prioritize kids getting to go after. And if, to feel this point, it puts these kids at a. Terrible disadvantage and sets them up not for success the day, missing announcements. Coming to school and needing to be fed for the ones that do and not being fed and then being asked to sit in class and hold their attention. And to know what they're supposed to know because the other kids got the announcement. I just think we're not doing our students a service. So if that means that we need to look at more buses, fantastic. But I think we also need to realize that we're gonna be up and down in staffing numbers while this pandemic and flu comes around. So do we need to adjust our timing to also accommodate? I, I don't really know, but I would really appreciate admin. And our good friend Nathan coming around and looking at more resources, more solutions. Um, before winter, I don't want to see kids not being fed. I don't want to see kids standing out in the cold. Um, this is a real concern to me and it's a concern that I. I've been putting on the grind for a long time now. And I just feel like we could have, we could have prevented some of this had we planned for the worst case scenario instead of being happy that we were in. So that's my preach, not a whole thing. I, I would like to see an update on that, moving towards. Why can't we adjust our timings, um, to accommodate? You don't need to answer that right now.
I would say it's not, this was a conversation we had late in the summer. We made decisions that, this, that. The winners and losers are made of, we also had CBA problems with, in connection with making some moves. So, um, and we had concerns about the availability, the impact it was gonna have on our school care profession. So ultimately, we did the best we could with what we had. Um, I understand the concern. And I don't know how to fix for you. We can talk about, let me prepare and we'll come back. We'll have a later conversation. But this was, we did it for it. And we came to include that, the, the thing that we're gonna have to give up. Or, or there's structural issues that work and are not gonna allow us to just move at times. So, but I.
Well, I would like to, I would like to have that very conversation as a board, because I think it's important to understand what those things are. We could be giving up.
Yeah.
And, and the time. And, um, because again, our, our first business is making sure kids get to school on time. Right? So that, that's what we're in the business of before, we're in the business of after school things. Do you feel, so I, I would say that you see, you have my full support there, but, um. Regarding, uh, the math and the STAR results and the reading and your extra resources. I'm just curious, can you speak a little bit more about. How you're seeing those numbers play out? How many kids are getting that extra support? What were some of the results she saw from the STAR? I know, and I know the STAR results, the grain solve, it's not. I'm just curious where we are in all these new opportunities.
Yeah. So it gives us the stash of, this, uh, the STAR assessment is an online. Assessment that, uh, that a teacher can give in their regular classroom, uh, the student can take. And by the end of class, they've got, actually not even the full class, they've got, uh, results and a number, um, that, you know. To be honest, the teacher doesn't even take too close a look at. Uh, so we have, uh, math coaching position, reading specialist that. They take a look at the data, the numbers, uh, and then they have conversations with the teachers. Yeah, English teacher or math teacher and say, you know, okay, so. Zach's score was here. Is this really what you're seeing, uh, in class? Do you have any of the work to, some of its formatives that, that show whether or not they should or should not. Uh, receive additional support. And, you know, honestly, a lot of times it can be. Not every student takes this assessment as serious as possible. And so you start talking, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna shift you into this class. Gonna try harder. Uh, and we, we have had that, we, we will, uh, something to test, um. And so then what that does. Honestly, for this first several weeks of school, um, particularly in our math works class, it sits, uh, not quite as full as it could be. Because we're anticipating those results and then backfilling it. Um, and then you work from the high stage, um. We could have more students in, um, but we have, you know, the way that our, our structured supports work, we have. We case managers to the grade level, uh, one who's kind of working on the math and executive function side, and the other is working on their literacy set reading classes. And so any student with an IP typically will be able to access those teachers at grade level, uh, for support classes there. Then we have, um, a tier two intervention, which would be, uh, the reading specialist course for students who, uh, you do these reading or writing. So we have more reading courses than we have writing courses. And those are gonna be, uh, a full load of teaching load, um, there by grade level, um, for students because that's what fits best into their schedule. Uh, there's no real research that would indicate that you shouldn't be able to put seventh grader and a sixth grader at the same reading level. Uh, in one of those support classes, however. Our schedule dictates that when they're available and it always more comfortable, it's to be in with their, their same age years. Um. Those classes are anywhere from three to seven students, uh, in reading or writing or math. Um, I think we have one, maybe one math class nine, but they're, um. Focused, they're nine week classes, uh, that you, at the nine week point. Of the opportunity to work out, say, okay, now we're bouncing back into, uh, a different UA class, um. Or maybe at the nine week point you're staying on, uh, and moving up. It could be that you're changing as a sixth grader from the third grade class that was working more decoding skills. To a fifth grade classes working more on flow and two skills. Uh, so they'll, they'll kind of mark them through, uh, to get to the point where they can be. Out of that, of that. Some students don't want to listen. Uh, they like that small group. They like that. I should also mention those classes are in addition to their. Uh, their core content class. So you're gonna have, for a sixth grade, uh, English language class, and then you may also have. Um, core concepts with, uh, Mr. Goody, your additional readings.
Thank you. Carrie. Thank you so much for everything. I just wanted to clarify on my first comment that I was a sophomore, middle school student, but I think you made a general question. That all my little students, um, function like I do and. Um, a two questions, one on the, um, one on the start time and one on the curriculum. So with the start time. Were you saying that it, the start time for middle school might need to change?
I'm, I'm just saying that, that's when our initial bus issue started is because you used to be able to run, um. With fewer, well, I believe than we are now, with fewer buses, because the, the. because the, the start times were so different. We started at seven twenty, I think, uh, about seven twenty, seven thirty. So, you know, that was enough to get middle school, high school off early. Uh, and then you've got plenty of time to go and get all the elementary schools. So it was when you, when, I think the elementary school started a little bit later. Or no, they, they may have peeled back a little bit earlier in the shift and we started later. Um, that just became compressed. So I'm just pointing out that's, that's one of the problems is the compression time. Uh, and I'm not sure, and I said this each and every year, I'm not sure of the benefit. It's been incredible for middle school students to have that later start time, for like sleeping in. Um, the one greatest thing that we've seen is fewer students staying after prom because the students' time of the afternoon is really compressed now. So if you've got piano lessons, playing soccer team, you're, uh, doing any which number of things, that time isn't there necessarily, and students are a little more compressed.
Um, thank you. Um, and I don't pretend to know the implications of us, um, obviously make our contacts. Um, so I think with the health curriculum, I know we spoke about it a long time ago. And part of what I had, I was concerned about was the substance use curriculum that was, um, is often viewed as stigmatizing. But I know too that there's, um, some state regulations on what is or isn't in health curriculum. Um, and so I'm just curious, or I guess maybe it's just our request, if you know of anything that is a barrier to what your team wants to include within that curriculum or things that's really important, but the state, we're, we're just trying as a board to, um, talk through like legislative committee or advocacy work, um, that we need to do. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, but do you have any barriers now or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, but they could come up. So I, um, I allowed my PE help team, that's kind of their, their PLC, their, their goal this year is to rework that, um, and to come up with a new six-three curriculum. It's not necessarily in the exact realm of a smart goal for a PLC, but that's the time and the place and the team that I want doing that work. So it very much fits the needs of the school. Um, so.
Yeah.
You bet.
Yeah, and I think, um, like last week with Pat or us meeting, we had a peer suicide prevention group forum from that space of high school, they were talking about working with middle school. But I think too within like the health curriculum, I mean, I always try to sell, um, UNH students to work on some of that curriculum stuff. Um, so I think every health profession has a teaching, um, component or prevention promotion course. But also just thinking about the peers in the high school and the health professions. Um, I think often they're very focused on skills and skill development, but that prevention piece is so important in any health profession. So it'd be cool to just think about those collaborations.
Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else with a question?
Yeah. I wanted to first recall a comment that I've heard very positive things about the social worker. It's an organization I've been involved with that provides clothing and other, I guess, some needs for, for families and students and, and their social workers contacted them and they supplied them for them.
An incredible issue.
Yeah. So the other thing, I, I'm concerned about the leaking of the floor because that's the new part of the renovator field.
Really, you know, the doors.
That have been, like, built.
Right, sure. No, not the joint building, yes. Um, yeah, so there's, uh, there's not great seals around some of our doors. In particular, um, the flooring in the East double student commons, as you know, is a green product. Uh, and it cannot be waxed, uh, over the summers, which is what the other floors, uh, get, the treatment they get. And so where there's leaking around some of the doors, they're, you know, they're mop it up or whatever. Some of the water gets underneath, uh, and I'll start to just be composed. I think we've got a composting. Yeah, it's right, right by the threshold of some of the doors. Uh, and we've replaced them, um, we've re-blew new ones, but if it comes down to thresholds, uh, doors and when it whips around in that courtyard, uh, it seems like.
And going out, that's a nice idea.
Yeah.
It's only green if it doesn't have to be replaced on somebody.
Please.
Thank you. I am appreciative here and, uh, I, I guess I just want to follow on a few things. And maybe just an overall question about breakfast, school breakfast. Um, my kiddos at the elementary school, so I have heard kids, you know, kids that previously used to get breakfast say that they, uh, don't want to get breakfast anymore because they feel rushed when they get to the classroom. So I guess, um, maybe for Zach, but also just trying to understand from the middle school perspective, when a kid's either cutting it late or, um, for whatever reason, they're getting breakfast, you know, how much time are they allotted? And then, you know, is there a blanket instruction from all teachers, um, to not rush them to eat or to rush them to eat? Or like, what is, is there any sort of like standard protocol? I guess that would be my question to Zach too, as far as, um, you know, elementary schools. So it seems like maybe some teachers may be more, you know, you know, uh, open to having space for the child to eat in the classroom versus not. And so I guess I, you know, as somebody who's, you know, I don't skip breakfast, but my kid will sometimes skip breakfast and understanding the importance of breakfast, especially depending on how late in the day the child's getting a snack or whatnot. And, um, you know, diet eating being an issue, uh, of present entry, I guess I'm curious more about that.
Sure, so we, we offered second chance breakfast as well. So the kids, they're coming in late, they, they still do get breakfast and, uh, and that's something that we, for years have done. We had very small numbers, there's a stigma of getting school breakfast. When everybody else is socializing, you're sitting with a tray by yourself, uh, and one of the kids is actually hungry, you have to, you know, just go for it. Uh, so we tried, yeah, probably seven, eight years ago, what we offered a second chance breakfast so kids can grab and go and stay in bed with lunch. And so we have, uh, I tell, there are numbers this year, we typically have a hundred kids in a day that are getting breakfast. So it's, it's no longer, oh, those kids are getting breakfast, that's, let's go down and get something. They, they go through a line, they get, uh, their choices, they, and they go back there. So it's a, a ten-minute cycle that takes about, in our schedule, it takes about fifty minutes to get through.
That's awesome.
But it's, it's a, it works on that.
I want to take some notes for the elementary school. I can, I feel like this thing is there for some of the older kids instead too, so that's great. Um, I know at some point we talked, one of the little fun bugs that we had talked about, um, uh, I think I brought it to you Nathan at one point and you were looking at some of the old vehicles. I guess I'm just wondering where that stands. I think you probably gave me an update at some point of where it stood or, or whether you still even want something like that. Uh, but I guess I was curious. And for Zach, he's a newer here, right, Patty too? Um, I know there's, the middle school had talked about wanting, you know, possibly having some sort of bus that they could, you know, transport themselves. But I don't know if it was, it came down to more of a logistics thing or a training thing requirements, I think you said, Nathan.
I have to dial back. Uh, the reality is that there's a lot of limits on, um, what you can, what you can transport students in for school-related activities in and out of each day. Uh, where, where there are multiple districts right now that are chasing the activity bus concept that will allow us to do things like the golf team and some of the smaller sports teams that, that don't necessarily need a big bus and, and some of them actually travel at large, a greater distance. So when you take a whole bus, you take that bus out of service because it's so quiet, it stays. So we're chasing some of that. I, I don't have any real good information or, or, or answer right now, but, um, but using it for in-school, like field trip kind of during the day things, there's a, that's, that, that'll be more difficult for us, especially in any great number.
Okay.
But, but that processing, you're all looking, everybody, everybody wants to put people in vehicles that don't need a commercial driver's license.
I didn't see that in a session for an hour and a half today, just everybody discussing, uh, looking at these types of options that was best for. Uh, it's entertaining to be here with a church school, have a conversation, or all the, all the challenges that come with that and potential liabilities district and for individual employees, uh, if we put them in that situation. So everyone's, we're all trying to be creative around the state, but you know, when it's coming up against the liability issues, it's gonna have to put some.
Yeah, I guess what you're on the subject, I guess I was curious whether, um, the school could, uh, require background, further background checks than the bus company, given, um, the news, news, uh, articles, uh, incidents, uh, you know, it had, you know, a few months back. So I think there was a lot of concern in the community, um, around that. And, and, you know, from a real perspective, but just the community in general. And so I wondered if, um, this school could require our drivers, our contracted drivers to complete the background check. Um, already, right?
So I think we, uh, we do, but the Department of Education and the management is actually established, uh, all bus drivers have to be certified through the same background check process. At the department, they have a separate portal for the drivers, but it's sort of the same process that all of our staff in the school is going to do this month.
Okay. So I just want to clarify that. I think that's a question is, has there been any, um, you know, with the rec department getting a campus, has there been any sort of shift there in after-school sports or, um, overlaps between the rec department and the state?
Yeah, so the, the, they've got seven issues. So Kai Mead has been open, um, for at least five separate occasions so far this year. Um, the high school also has their features, uh, bigger place, which is the, uh, pencil volleyball game's been maintained. Middle school gym, so we haven't had any use of their apartment. Um, so it did, it's, they did just hire, uh, some of the, you're right, that apartment. We're excited to get new protocols in place, uh, just for student safety and accountability. Um, that seems to be what we're gonna do, uh, but it.
Okay. Any other questions, Val?
Well, thank you.
Every day.
Okay, next on the agenda is our update on replacement of the PHS. And I think we got, we want to talk on anything.
So I'll invite, I'll invite Kenny and Bree to, uh, come join us. Um, I think Bree, if you already have a chance to connect with Matt and get through that Zoom.
I have.
So.
See you up there.
So folks, um, in the presentation, there's a, there's a copy of the slideshow at your desk today, at the table tonight, as well as some pricing information that really will take us to the very good place. So take you back to the, the brief memo that I included, remind you that we have a synthetic turf at Fortuna High School. That synthetic turf, um, has, is reaching the end, it's nearing the end, it's used to life. And so as a part of our capital improvement submissions in recent years, we have been, um, spending, doing an element that would address replacement of the carpet on that field. Um, the project was submitted, uh, in FY twenty-three as an element and was approved. And then city council granted bond authorization for that project, exactly on July the eleventh. The first step in the process, Kenny led a, an RFP, an effort to find a partner, um, with experience in this area. Familiar with some of the same concerns that we might have as we address this project. Uh, Gale Associates was selected, they're our design engineer partner for, uh, this replacement. And tonight, Bree Sullivan is their chief tunnel engineer and our project manager for this project is with us. Uh, and Bree's going to share with you a, a brief presentation that take you from what we have to what it is and then some of the options that we'll face. Uh, not looking for any action items tonight, uh, we'll have to come back to you for some decision-making in the future. But I wanted to start by getting you some education and information so that you, uh, you begin to think and research and, and prepare yourself for that. I guess I, I would, I would offer up only as I had the question asked and offer up maybe an answer to the first question. Uh, with some like that. This project is not to build a field or to replace a field, it is to maintain field essential. We have a field that's been there almost a dozen years and it's been in use and it's been very well used. Kenny can speak more specifically about how some of its consumption. It's time to pull up the carpet, recycle it, and then make sure that the underling is good to go and laying out new carpet. It isn't, it's, it's a fraction of the project that it might take if you were putting in a new field or if you were changing that field to something else. I've had the question asked, could we make it grass? The infrastructure under this is specifically intended not to grow any, and you can tell it to drain and support that field. Uh, and so, uh, the project to dig all that up and put natural grass in is a completely different topic. It isn't really the scope of your life.
Can you just clarify why, I, I love learning about everything, but why this is coming to the school board? Is this, would we be deciding on this or just supporting the recommendations of Kenny and the project manager?
I'm gonna, I think ultimately you have to make a choice. And your question is best answered, I think, in the fourth of three's presentation. She's gonna talk to you about the, the layers of this structure. And the, the final decision really is the final additive, the final piece, which is the infill. So infill option is something that ultimately would be some, some direction.
And is this currently in our budget or this would be?
This is part of the capital room plan.
The city.
The, the city's got a room.
And is there a number or are we going?
Ultimately, we're still working on it. We're, we're, we're trying to prepare ourselves, you know, to see how we're gonna.
Okay.
But I just mentioned that this turf field was originally the very first thing that had to be done for the middle school renovation. Before they did the renovation, they had to build the, the turf field and then build a field where the old school was. Those two things were done first before the renovation, but that was part of the project. So that's. And it's part of the funding, the reimbursement we got from the state. Like, we were required to do that, minus we got reimbursement from our state. I mean, we were the only one that's getting more, last one to get you a project. The reimbursement from the state that cannot exist anymore for building schools. I mean, every other state in the country has building reimbursement schools, but you can, you know, we did.
You have a very special state.
Yes.
It's very special.
I just want to be clear because it looks, you know, after reviewing this, it looks like, uh, as far as, uh, making a decision. I mean, turf fields right now are obviously very controversial, um, you know, there's some raging, stirring, and jealousy, obviously, we're gonna hear more about that. But are we, when you're saying that this is in the CIP, is there an amount in the CIP and then we're gonna have to put the bill for the infill? Or is there, um, are we making a decision for the full amount that is going to be pushed towards the CIP? Like, I just want to clarify where our, our decisions are gonna be to know. But here, I think that's where thinking about what we have at this time.
So I would suggest that tonight, tonight it's more definition, uh, in, in our education, what is it? Um, we don't know necessarily what the costs will specifically be. The appropriation in the CIP was for eight hundred thousand dollars. And so, uh, if, if the project ends up being measurably more than eight hundred thousand dollars, then we have to talk about how to resolve that. It's, I mean, it, right now, right now, it's not an expense that you have and you may or may not have money. It's a, it's an appropriation authorization that you have. Now we have to make sure that this fits. Certainly money may, may help influence the decision you make about infill. Uh, you may not be able to afford the most expensive infill option or you may instead choose to look for other funding. But right now, it's simply to try to make sure that we know what we're talking about before we're asking any decisions, which you're not being asked to do tonight.
Can we maybe hold our questions out of respect for Bree and Kenny's time? Let them go through their presentation.
Why don't we do that? I think it would be, but I think Carrie and my point was clear that we need to know what we're dealing with before we're walking into this, so I know what.
Well, let's listen to the presentation and then we can decide.
Yes.
So, thank you, I think, uh, Bree Sullivan, uh, from Gale Associates, and, um, I'm gonna be.
Thank you, Nathan, for the introduction. Um, again, my name is Bree Sullivan, as Nathan said. Um, I'm with Gale Associates, so as a bit of background, Gale Associates was the original design engineer for the field as you see it now. Um, that was in twenty-ten. The, um, the field is now twelve years old, plus or minus. Um, and as far as fields go, it's in pretty good condition for a twelve-year-old field. We've seen some go a little bit longer and they look a lot worse and we've seen some go a lot less. So that's a credit to, um, Ken's maintenance on the field. That, that always makes a field last longer, my understanding is well used. Um, so basically what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through, um, the process, basically the design, how the turf has changed and then some options that you have for infill. And so I have this model here, which, and I have a lot of show and tell, which I think your school board appreciates. So this is a, this is a mock-up of what, um, modern synthetic infill turf looks like. And I'll go through some slides as well. Um, so as I'm talking about the things, I can point to them here. I will pass this around, I have other things I can pass around here, but, um, we'll start with, um, what we're doing to the, to the field as of now, so. I will pass this around, I have other things I can pass around here, but um we'll start with um what we're doing to the, to the field as of now, so. This is a basic Google aerial photo of the field, which north be to the um, the black the area there, it says Clipper Pride. Um, that is the existing field. The uh proposed field will look nearly exactly as you see it in the, in the photo here. So, uh, if you didn't tell anybody, and they came to the field, they wouldn't know anything was done, once construction was done. So, um. Two weeks ago, I came out and did an evaluation of the field, as well as did a little bit of survey. Uh, to take a look at the issues with the existing field. Um, as I said, it looks pretty good for a field of its age because of maintenance. Um, and you can see a few things here, so turf fiber deterioration, so we, you see in that first, I'm gonna go for the upper left-hand corner, down to the lower right-hand corner. Um, turf fiber deterioration, you can see the fibers have broken off in that first picture. That's a definite sign of um the carpet, and so turf is a carpet. Um, it's actually made by the same. Companies that make carpet, Shaw is one of the big turf providers, and um you can see it's pretty much, I'll pass this around, it's pretty much like a carpet. It's got a batter, and it's a cupping. Um. The fibers degrade over time. So, uh, the second picture there is a turf anchor curb, which is concrete, and that's the thing that the turf is glued to. Um, onto the third photo, and I have a radiant corner, exposed infill and worn line markings, so you can see the wear. Um, what's really happening there is you're seeing the black infill, that's crumb rubber infill, that's what's currently used in the field. Crumb rubber, for those of you that don't know, is ground up car tires. Um. The exposed infill and worn line marking, so what happens here, especially on the sidelines, is when the turf wears, it lays over. And when it lays over, there's not enough turf standing up to hold the infill in place, that's why you can see that. Um, down on the lower left-hand corner, turf attracts surface transitioned area. Um, pretty good condition. Turf, the natural grass transitioned area, which is the opposite end, the southern side of the field. Um, and then you see a general picture there of the turf fiber layer over. So the next slide, um, I'll go through the typical construction sequence for a turf replacement project. Um. So the total process takes about. Four to six weeks, depending on um the different aspects that need to be done to the field. In this case, actually, one of the things we're gonna do at the field is replace the uprights. Um, we often see what's happened to these uprights because of the exposure and the wind, uh, being on the seacoast. It actually affects the, uh, the structure and can, can actually bend the uprights, we uh did a field down in Hull. Um, that they just recently replaced the crossmember, because the crossmember twisted, because Hull's on an insulate, so, um, they were pretty bad. Um, but we're actually instead of, so those, those uprights are aluminum, instead of aluminum, we're gonna specify um a, a stronger steel product. Um, that hopefully won't have the same result, and we have a pretty good relationship with the supplier, um, and they typically advise us on this sense. Um, so the first thing they'll do when they come out to do the construction is they'll, they'll lay down track protection, we have a nice new track there. Um, it was done a few years ago, we don't want to affect that track surfacing at all, so they, they lay down protection masks. Um, and they'll use equipment like you see there, um, lawn tractors or larger, uh. Tractors you might see on a farm. Uh, they'll go onto the field, they'll cut the existing turf. And they'll roll it up in rolls, and as they roll it up, they actually remove the infill, and they separate that out, dispose of that separately. Uh, in some cases, you can reuse the infill, so it's rubber, it doesn't really deteriorate as fast as the grass does, as the turf does, so. You can reuse the rubber and supplement it, um, some municipalities choose to do that. Um, once they have removed the existing turf and infill, they'll laser grade the stone base. Um, so basically, that'll correct any issues with, uh, we call it plenary, so the field is, is true. And there are standards that they have to meet before they can actually apply the new turf. Um, if um Portsmouth decides to go with um a shock pad. Uh, this shock pad would then be installed on the stone. So that is the extent of, of work that is done on site, but this is the shock pad. Essentially a pad that goes underneath the turf.
Isn't this, you know, foam?
Yeah, it's a foam, and you can see there's a couple other versions here, this is the XBS styrofoam, and then this is, if I'm not mistaken, recycled. Re, that's actually recycled, um.
Shoes.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So there, so there's three different options at this point for the pads?
Yeah, so those are different options with different manufacturers.
And we're no pad.
Or no pad, right now, there is no pad.
And I'm sorry, so the three options were um styrofoam, was that another one?
We, they're, they're, they're all versions of foam, foam rubber.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that there will ultimately be a decision to be made about the brand here, that would just be part of the, part of the, the solutions. Uh, but.
Exactly.
We will, we certainly, we will certainly recommend that a shock pad, that a shock pad.
Like, I think the shoes are rubber, like, I thought there was a difference between the foam and the rubber, I was shocked.
Well, then actually, if you, if you put those on the floor and you step on, the, the pressure is the same on, I've actually tried this. Um, they, they feel underfoot to be the same, they have the same.
But as far as I guess environment, if we were thinking environment-wise, foam versus the, the rubber.
Um.
Is there anything there now?
Not, not necessarily, I mean, um, it's always like, whoa.
I'm sorry, were you mentioning with the benefit of a pathway?
I will get to that. Um, so, um, if the shock pad is installed, they would do it at this step after the plenary is completed. Um. Then they will install the turf and inlay the markings, some of the markings come from the battery, some of them have to be cut in. Um, and then, um, the final step to the installation is installing infill and doing a final rub. So a brief history of synthetic turf systems, first generation, if you're many of you are aware of, um, AstroTurf, it was installed in the Atrodome. Um, it was quite different than what we use today. Um, so we go through the, the successive improvements that they did, second generation and third generation. Um, continuous improvement, um, they actually, as you can see in the second generation, they use exclusively use sand that is very hard on the player's bodies, because there was, wasn't any cushioning there, other than from the turf. Um, third generation, and really close to what we use today. Um. Is SBR sand, so SBR is the rubber with sand infill, and it's polyethylene fiber. So this is today's synthetic turf systems, it's a system, and that is the reason why I have this here, this particular system has an alternative infill in it, and I'll go through that. So, um, there are several types of infills that are available. The most widely used is the crumb rubber, and it's actually the most widely studied infill, because about eighty percent of the fields use that. Um, about twenty percent of the fields that we do today, um, opts to go with alternative infill for one reason or another. Um, so you can see the infills there, TPE, Brockfill, and we'll go through them in more detail on the following slides, Envirofill, this here is Envirofill. You can barely see it because the, the color actually matches the turf. Um, and then Safe Shell and other organic turf infills, uh, the organic one showed there, and the one, uh, I have a sample of. Is called Corcoranut, which is um cork fiber and co, and um cork, cork fiber and. Coconut shells, sort of, the, the, the outside coating on the coconut shell. Um, and then EPDM is um virgin rubber, so it's not recycled tires, it's actually, um, before, it's not recycled at all, it's before, it's actually used in products, so. Um, that's also a mill. So, um, the turf fiber systems that we have today, so, um. They've actually, so. We have different, um, fibers for different reasons, there's um slip film, essentially like a, a piece of Scotch tape that they cut into little. Um, blades, and then monofilament has, um, and so the slip film actually is, likes to lay over more. Um, and it's preferred for sports like football and lacrosse. Um, monofilament, um, tends to stand up more, it's actually got a, a plastic spine in it, monofilament is the fiber that is at the field right now. Um, monofilament is preferred more by soccer for better ball control. Um, and then for a true multipurpose field, we use dual fiber, most of the fields that we install these days, or that we design these days, ends up with a dual fiber for multipurpose. Um, I would say pretty close to ninety percent of them use the dual fiber. Uh, because they're true multipurpose fields, especially at the high school level. Um. So the other option is the turf underlayment, you can see, um, the three pads that are pictured here, the ones that I passed around, they're just different versions for the same purpose. And you can see here on this example, the pad's here, then the turf is placed down, and then the infill is placed in the turf. Um. The distinction of the pad is when you use SBR rubber and EPDM, you don't need to use a pad. Uh, it's optional, and so the shock pad provides cushioning, um, for impact sports, especially playing football. Um, most of our clients that, that use, um. Use, that redo the turf in their football fields will use the pad, and it's optional for other fields, so we just did a field, um. In Lowell, that was soccer only, at actually UMass Lowell, and they opted not to go with a pad, because it was soccer. So, um. A lot of our clients go with the pads because of the reduced, um, likelihood of concussion and impacted, it's not, not only concussion, but, um, lower tremor. Tremor stress injuries.
Can you say again, which is, like, we're gonna wait until after to ask questions, please? And well, coaches ask a question before that, but I don't know, but I didn't hear what she said.
We're gonna wait.
I didn't hear what she said as far as which ones, which uh fills didn't need the pad, I just wanted to.
So the two rubber fills, the SBR, which is the crumb rubber, and the EPDM rubber. Okay, continue, please. Now we'll get into some of the alternative infill options. We'll start with SBR. Um, it's the most studied of all infills and known performance results. It's the least expensive. Um, when we go through the different slides here, when I, when I give you a differential cost, the differential cost is relative to using crumb rubber. Um. Crumb rubber can be plowed for winter field usage, some of these other infills aren't as, is amenable to that. Um, some of the cons, perceived health and safety concerns. Um, there is a, a slight increase in heat when, um, you use crumb rubber, because it's black and it attracts the sun. Um, which also helps it in the winter, so that's a pro anacon. Um, and it tends to compact over the light of the carpet. So starting with the alternative infills, um, organic and natural infill. On the left is cork, I'm actually not quite so. These are all the same, these are all the different infills we're talking about. Um, and you can, you can open them if you wanna touch them and see what they're, see how they feel.
What do we, can I ask what we have, um, you said, for what we have at our units now, and then what do we have at?
So, so cork is on here, we don't use cork because it's hydrophobic and it floats. So what happens is with cork, is if you get a flashy rainstorm, it can migrate in the field and you have to redistribute it, and it's very expensive. Um, corcoranut is what I mentioned earlier, I actually found some of that here, this is corcoranut, it's also called green play, green play is a, a same brand of a specific manufacturer. Um, so it's cork and coconut husk, um, sending a sample of that around. And then walnut shells, I'm sure you're very familiar with. And then the engineered wood, um, the, the one picture there is Brockfill, which is engineered wood, here's a sample of that. Brockfill is one of the more economical choices for, uh, organic natural infill. Some of the pros with organic natural infills mean factory from naturally occurring materials. Um, organic colors and texture closely imitate a natural grass field. Um, once you are done with the infill, it can be used for soil amendment and end of life, spread over the soil, and it just blends in, it's like a mulch. And it, it can run cooler than SBR infill fields, because it's not dark, and it doesn't attract the sun and heat. Some of the drawbacks to natural, um, and organic natural infill. Um, it may require periodic replenishing and watering, so we had a really dry summer, some of our clients that have, uh, natural infill. Um, have, have to water the infill, otherwise it can, it can shrink and compact. Um, floor can actually blow away in some cases, depending on how, um, how well the field is groomed. Um, so sometimes you have to add water to it, so it expands again, um, and gets the, the, gets its loft back, so to speak. Um. There's a higher tendency for defreeze, because it holds moisture. It may not be best suited for plowing for winter field usage, so those two kind of work in tandem. Um, if it's a higher likelihood of defreeze, um, it, it may inhibit winter field usage. Um, and then depending on which you choose, it can add approximately forty thousand to one hundred and sixty thousand, so forty thousand would be the Brockfill on the end of things. Um, and then one hundred and sixty would be like the cork or not, or some of the other ones. Oh, I guess I had a slide, I mean, I did. So in the previous presentation, we had a few examples of the fields where we use these, but, but, so. Um, switching over to, uh, the non-natural infills, virgin EPDM rubber infill. This is the same material that, that is used on the tracks, so, um, there are manuals that are not recycled rubber, but virgin rubber. Some. Think that this is a, a safer, um, infill to use, safer than the crumb rubber. Uh, so they opt to go with this, this is also one of the most expensive infills, alternative infills. Um, property contraction, resilience qualities, maintenance, and manufacturing process that's same or similar to SBR rubber or crumb rubber. Uh, it's available on proprietary names, which can reduce the heat effect in synthetic fields, the other color, the various colors, um, as you see here, it's, um, available in green. Um, can be plowed for winter field uses, its performance is similar to SBR rubber with, with respect to winter field usage. Uh. EPDM rubber can add two hundred thousand dollars to the initial cost of the field. Uh, the availability of some of the materials can be limited in some locations in the United States. Thermal plastic elastomer, TPE, essentially little plastic pellets, they're extruded and they're. Cut off, you can kind of see how they're, how they're cut off there, you can see the little line. It's harder than rubber, but rounded. So it feels softer underfoot. Uh, commonly used for medical devices, children's toys, and household items. Can be used for multiple turf replacements, so. You replace the turf, you can remove it, recycle it, right back into the turf field. Um. Used TPE can recycle it into new products, so it's a one hundred percent recyclable product. Um, and it can be plowed for winter fields. We've seen in the past, uh, poor quality TPEs, which can be at the risk of clumping or melting together over time, that's not as big of an issue now, because they've worked on the supply chain. Um, it can add approximately two hundred and twenty thousand to initial costs. Coated sand, so, um, coated sand is essentially rounded sand, um, particles with an acrylic coating on it, like, like a paint coating. Um, so this here is the coated sand. Uh, it's durable, reduce fly up and migration, um, firm surface preferred for small ball sports, gives better ball roll. Um, and it can be plowed for winter field uses, this is one of the best for winter field usage, because it's heavy, and it stays in the turf. Poor quality coatings can degrade over time, um, it's considered one of the most abrasive for all infill options, it's right up there with the coconut shells. Can add approximately a hundred and eighty thousand to initial costs. Yeah, that's, yes. So, um, this coated sand and a sample I sent around is Envirofill. And we've, um. Several communities this year actually opt to develop this, uh, we saw several locations with this.
So Ree, Ree, at their, at the, at their seats, they have not only the slides, but they have the cost differential between. They have not only the slides, but they have the cost differential between the infills. To take what, to take what you just referenced in round figures and give you some sense of what we anticipate will come out of the game with regard to these alternative infills. They're, they're multiplied by an estimated cost per unit, multiplied by the, the square footage of the, of the school that we're. Couple of things that we anticipate passing forward into the, into the design specifications. One is we, we reference the shot pad, I think, scan or of the same mind that regardless of the infill choice, we prefer a shock pad under this. Obviously, if we have chrome rubber today and we may have chrome rubber moving forward, but and that would be, that would make shock pad optimal. But for the protection that it adds to our student athletes and any of our athlete participants on those, on that field, we think that it's worth the investment. The second item was that we are specifying that we were asked to specify that, that the existing turf that comes up, the carpet that comes up, we decided. We heard through the CIP process at the council, multiple comments about environmental concern or some landfill option coming around. So we will, we will specify that the turf has to take it up constantly recycled.
Is that covered in the numbers?
It's actually, so it the shock pad is included in the numbers that you're given. The numbers you're given isn't the full package right now. But the, but right now in our specification, we anticipate, I, I will tell you that there was clarification requested in one of our conversations, which was it's more expensive to, it's more expensive to specify recycling as turf again, as opposed to recycling for other useful purpose. We clarified that to the extent that it will save us money and make other things possible. Recycling period would be important to us, even if it's not for turf again, which is a smaller niche and a greater cost. And so we were hopeful that that will, that that will not be a significant cost impact in the, in the bid specs, the bid results that come back. So mentioned definitely, definitely shock pad we want, definitely recycle and plowing. So an initial review of this conversation in anticipation of tonight. One of the things that Kenny pointed out reminded us, and some of you will have memory of this, that when the field first came into use in, in some of the short initial years, there was a lot of pushback about clearing it, plowing it in the winter and making it usable. I don't know if we have any formal contests that run in the winter season, but there's a whole lot of consumption of the field when you plow and use, right?
It does, but it also allows spring sports to. It's not well known.
Unofficial, yeah.
But it allows them to get them out exercising prior to what they, what they do in park.
And given that we're using it and given that this board gave that direction about these people, that this board gave direction years back that we should make that a priority. We've asked them to include that. And so as we get closer to, you know, bidding and bid results, plowing, which you show, you'll see it shows up in the slides, which is something we asked them to add in and specify. And what it really gets to, I think, is that some of the alternatives are too light. And where you, where she talked about, we talked about the, the, the water floating them and actually was the phrase you used, relocating or
Migrating.
Migrating, yeah, migrating infill. The same would be when it's in the winter season when we're plowing. So that will reduce our, that will limit some of our options. But, but not, not, doesn't reduce all of them. Doesn't limit us, I don't think, too much. So those, those will pass in. And, and I think as it stands right now, I'm not asking for any decisions, but I think that we will, based on the cost structure, we would ask for a base bid that would be from rubber again. And then alternatives, the ads for the alternative infills that we might choose instead. The shock pad would traditionally, or not traditionally, in some scenarios, the shock pad would be an additional ad, but we intend to put the shock pad in regardless. So the choice of an alternative infill is not dependent on that now. It doesn't add any cost to the shock pad. We're gonna have that anyway.
Can you tell us the timetable for this? When, what is striking?
I mean, I, I, I guess I would speak for, maybe during. I think would like, I think in the next couple of meetings, that we would have another conversation, follow up and have some consensus on the board about what the design specifications could and would say. And maybe I've already said it, right? We're hoping that we put it out as a base bid and then adds for alternatives. I think we could limit the alternatives, not be asking for six or eight of them, but for maybe a couple. And when we look at, when we look at what meets the needs for multiple sports and for plowability and for and I guess I, yeah. I think, I think it will naturally become a relatively short list. We'd like the board to feel comfortable with that as we go up to bid, because then when it comes back, we'll have costs and options and then we'll have to make some final decisions in contract so that we can get the work done and excel.
Lisa, this might be a later question, so feel free to tell me that, but I know we think about environmental safety, we think about costs, we also think about our athlete safety. Is there solid data at this point where we could really make a decision to say that one type of product is substantially safer from injury or standpoint, or is that more factory? And it don't need the data. I'm just curious if it's out there, if we want to weigh that.
So there is some data out there. I can tell you that the most studied infill is the chrome rubber. Most of the study that's done there is in terms of safety to the player's health, because there's been some accusations. The EPA has a central repository for those studies, many of which, not all of which are peer reviewed. The study is, was done in two phases. Phase one was characterization of what is in chrome rubber. And phase two is the risk exposure to athletes playing, using that chrome rubber. So pretty easy to find the EPA website. There's tons of studies there. They actually have a summary, an executive summary about the phase one. I believe they're in phase two now or they're getting ready to get into phase two. But you can, you know, you want. But as far as the injury is concerned, there are studies out there that show that the shock pad provides a lower extremity injury protection to some degree. There are also some studies out there that kind of refute that, that were, that were put out by one particular turf manufacturer. I won't get into all that, but I was thankful by someone wants to sell something else. So, yeah, yeah, it's not a whole lot of data, but there is.
So can I offer, then impressions, but I, I should have said it at the outset. We suggest, having, having met and reviewed and discussed this, that among the priorities that we would suggest the board consider ultimately, athlete safety, total cost has to be a factor. Playability and for that, it's student preference, supportive of multiple sports, et cetera, things that matter to the kids that are going to use it. Environmental concern. And the fifth is maintenance needs, most specifically plowability, but also long-term upkeep. We would suggest that all of those factor in because we think that those are, those reasonably would be at the top of your minds. There may be other priorities. If there are, I would come and ask hook the voices and we can add those, make sure that they're reflected in our, in our business.
Liz and then Hope.
I have a, a feeling now. And if you, you talk about the lifespan of the shock, the different types of shock pads, different types of turf fiber and the different types of infill.
Sure. So turf in general will last. So you, you, you know, there is about twelve years old now. Anywhere between, so the warranty on the turf field is eighteen years. We routinely see turf fields with good maintenance last between ten and twelve years. There's a field we're replacing next year that's, that has been fourteen years. Probably shouldn't have gone that long, but pads typically have a warranty of sixteen years. So you'll get through turf changes with, with one pad. So you don't have to replace the pad. Anywhere between fifteen and sixteen years is the warranty on the pad.
For all the shot, all the different shock pads?
But the different shock pads, that's, that's pretty standard. You would, you install it once and you change the turf twice. And then infills, you know, it varies with the infills. Some of them degrade. The natural infills will degrade over time. So you have to replenish it. To some degree, you have to replenish all infills. You have to add, part of what we include in the, in the contract is a super sack, which is about two thousand pounds of infill provided to the school to use on the field as added stock. So to some degree, you have to replenish the infill. The rubber infills are recyclable back into the field a second time. It does degrade over time. Not a lot, not a lot of municipalities choose to do that. They just change it out completely for whatever reason. One of the problems with recycling with turf is when we saw the little bits of plastic that were in my hand in that photo. Though they try to separate that, they can't separate it all. So we actually did a side-by-side field. One had new infill and the other one had recycled infill. And the recycled infill field went to waste right out of the gate. And so the, the municipality wasn't happy with it. So it's totally up to the, the city and the school if they want to do that. But there are, it varies depending on which infill you choose.
And then as far as the turf fibers or any of those or, or Michelle would?
No, so they're, they're about the same. They degrade at the same rate. Again, you saw the photo where I had in my hand, they degrade that way. Where they break apart and that's mainly because of degradation from the sun, due to deterioration. And the better you maintain the field, the better you can have the blade standing straight up, the longer it'll last. That doesn't expose the whole spine into the sun. So when you get blade layover, that's when it starts to deteriorate the sun.
And so my kid's been playing on the, the field now and he comes home with a small sack of the pellets all over my later backboard because I still walk around with them. Is there a way to prevent that or are certain fills, I mean?
Well, they're gonna dominate them.
And then anything else? Where, where is the field being used for currently or getting the most use? Obviously football. But are there other sports that are using that particular field regularly? Okay. And do we know what the decision was made for, or why the decision was made at KU campus to have some sort of, you said it was a cork film?
Well, most of it.
On that shelf? Why, why was that? Do we know why that was decision?
Okay, can we ask Council boy lock to answer that question?
At the time, we had thought that PFA's didn't exist in the other infills. We thought doing all natural infill would have no BP, it'd free. We found we were wrong in that assumption. PFA's are everywhere. If you grow walnut shells, PFA's will grow in the walnut shells themselves. If you want to clean metal tools, you put them in a metal tumbler with walnut shells. It's not, it's pretty abrasive. You know, you put your arm in there and then kind of what it's like playing football over there. I mean, yeah, so I would say that all the infills, you know, there is no infill that is, that is.
And as far as.
Yeah, that was our, that was our.
So as far as CP prevention, the rubber seems to be like the, the best.
Well, I can tell you that anecdotally, players were told all the time that players prefer chrome rubber. All the infills, when they, when they, you know, choose other infills, this is Enviro and Rattlefill. It's sand. So it's abrasive. So people who use the field typically prefer chrome rubber. Or, or EPDM is the same, would be the same.
Okay, who's next? Todd. So question to me then, or Kenny? So when you guys come back to us, out of all the considerations that you brought, I think there were five or six that you just said, which was a very comprehensive list. Will you be coming back with us with your recommendations based on those five or six considerations?
We're still growing on timeline, but I guess I would, I would welcome your feedback. We need to go up to bid. We'd like to go up to bid with a modest request. The general saying you wouldn't go up to bid with five or six or seven different alternative ads.
No, 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 no. Let me just correct you. I don't mean five or six different ones. I just mean those consideration factors you were.
Absolutely.
Those would be in there.
Based on those factors, absolutely. And I think what we're hoping is that we could get to a point where we would offer up a base bid request and then one or two alternatives that we'd like to have added some potential adds in a different response. Getting that done in, in the next short term would be helpful so that we can then get to bid. So that we can ultimately come back with the result and make that decision. That makes sense?
Yes.
So, and, and those were athlete safety, total cost, playability, environmental concerns and, and maintenance slash plowability.
And to you, Bree, I wanted to make sure that I understood your point regarding the turf fiber systems. So there's not really a difference in impact play or in the chrome kind of coming up and being exposed. Like what we're seeing right now is coming home as Liz said, we feel a lot of kind out on that field. I get a lot of crap. It's, it's all good. But I'm just curious, like, is there a difference in the impact play of having like the dual fiber versus any of the other?
So for a true multi-purpose field like this is used, the, the hybrid fiber. So the dual fiber is weighted.
That's very good. Okay. And that's what we're asking for, Kenny. Okay. So for me as a board member, I feel like this is your pay grade, Kenny. It's what you do all day long. So I would really appreciate, like, just having an understanding of what superintendent knowing that you guys are covering those five or six high considerations. Those are my considerations. I feel like those things have been addressed tonight. So I just want to hear from Kenny, what are you recommending to this board?
Right now, we, I'm not gonna say my final answer.
No, it's fine.
Well, I can, maybe it's been included in chrome rubber. But you know, ultimately, you know, we look at safety, we look at durability, but if we want to make this a four-seasonal field, then we really have to take the plowability and do the project. If not, then our students, we, we've seen snow and our lean before. And we see, you know, storms where I'm still making awareness, the kids can open up, which would be the gym stress on March twenty-second, March fifteenth, so that baseball and softball can stay in gym. And then lacrosse can kick off outside, but then softball, baseball can also go outside because then we get soggy athletic baseball, softball fields because it's too muddy for them to play. So it comes a win-win for all spring programs when we look at that, that playability. So again, we'll, we'll probably use the chrome rubber as the base bid price and look at a couple of other alternatives. We've discussed the cause and the athletic needs and how we go for it.
Me, I think one of the things that we would hear from you as a group is if, I mean, our lean is non, non-plow friendly products are not ones that we would suggest you unless you were to tell us today that, that I, or it doesn't have to be tonight, but we'd have to know pretty soon that you were open as a group to say, we're interested in some of these other things that are not very plowable because of the other pros that are associated with those sets. If we didn't hear that, the default thing from three of us would be, we need the previous boards in the community seems to have expressed the desire for a four-season operation. And if so, we would not recommend.
Okay. And to, just one more question for Kenny. So I, I lean with the little knowledge that I have and athletes in my house, I lean more towards a pad versus maintaining that we don't have a pad right now. Is there a reason from a maintenance perspective for?
No, we, we thought about that from the beginning and we're going to expect to have enough installed this for the action for student playability. So go to that piece of, that, that loose piece of paper that you have. And I would agree to help. So on this pad, just FYI, you see that the field is just over seventy-eight thousand square feet. And the estimate right now for the shock pad is at the top of the page here, it's a dollar per square foot. We anticipate including that in the base bid. We want the pad no matter. And to look at the options that we walked through in the slideshow, chrome rubber to the base, and that's why you see that she's given a relative difference of zero here because we anticipate that the base cost for any solution to be priced there. The Brockville is that wood shave, which is not plowable. So if you want to put a little P or non-P or X, whatever you want to do,
We would, we we don't anticipate, given the plowability concern, that would be an issue. But this cork cork nut or safe shell, those those um, or yeah, those natural would be plowable. As with the Enviro fill, the Enviro fill is the branding of that coated sand. And then obviously, the 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 virgin EPDM would be, but that's another version of chrome rubber, just more expensive because it's virgin. Um, and then the TP, the the TPE is is um, classic. And I, and and I think that both the 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 EPDM is plowable, but I'm not sure the TPE would recommend.
Pretty light.
Pretty light. So I think that 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 would generally be out, and so, um. So I said, no actions, no decision, but I think, you know, we were, as we're sitting here, it does narrow itself down, that we asked maybe the base bid from rubber. And then one or two of the alternatives as an option. Um, you'll, you know, you're, you're, you should be open to public feedback and comment about which of those alternative fills you might like or not like and why. But that's, I think, where we land as we get ready to go to bid.
Um, well, just to clarify what you're saying, while you said that the. Cork 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 nut. Um, safe shell is horrible, it is also reusable, which then comes into the topic of play. We need to keep that in mind if we're thinking for a four season, um, I think that's important, but it, does that not? Migrate as well, since it does have some cork in?
It can, but it's sort of.
Stays together.
Stays together when when with water, it stays together, more so than if you use straight.
Right, because to me, I mean, I think right now, we have, you said.
Liz, 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 you're out of order, it's Carrie's turn. Danielle, okay, Danielle.
Oh, actually, most of my question got um. Answered, e- essentially, I was thinking about that that recyclability of the SVR. Um, and and I heard you say that, but it's really the appearance thing that.
But it is recyclable.
Is there a cost benefit like this? So if we decided to recycle what we have, so.
Any other questions, any first time with? Um, I'm just wondering if you could tell us which of these are recyclable, they know the chrome rubber is. And is the, I assume the TPE is not, but.
I don't know, um, I know that it's recyclable, but I. So Brock fill, Brock fill is, so Brock fill's a byproduct of the timber industry, so um, it's actually kind. So that is definitely new use of something that otherwise wouldn't be good, so.
And then, what happened was that the Enviro fill, that's the coated sand, right? Um, I'm sorry, I don't remember what, how you said that, but um, it seems very abrasive, and I'm wondering, can you feel that?
It is one of the most abrasive, um, it's kinda like the um, it's kinda like the walnut shells.
Does anyone else have a comment?
For these costs that are here, so there's like seventy eight thousand, and then. I'm assuming there's other costs not for materials with the ballpark on install.
I guess I would, I would comment from what what I've been able to see from the estimates they've shared. Uh, the top half of this or the bottom half of this, I should say, will challenge our rate, will challenge our budget. But uh, the bottom, so the more expensive, the more expensive.
Any others?
There are, there are, yeah, there are some. It remains to be seen when we get out to bid, you know, how the numbers really bear out, what the base bid looks like. Uh, one of these is very good news, we can tell you, this is the testing they've already done. Reports back that underneath the ground, if you will, underneath the earth. Um, the the field that we have is in excellent shape, the drainage, I don't think there's not a lot of work that needs to be done. They will laser grade and you'll re- regrade the shot surface, but they don't have to dig down under, and they've tested that to see if there's any. But there's no failure, so in another cycle, in another environment, in another situation, you might have significant costs digging stuff up and fixing stuff. In this case, we don't, which is good, so we're hoping that. Um, if we stay at the, if we stay at the lower cost end or near the middle here, we might be able to make this fit. Uh, with the chuck pad, with the costs. It's, there's a couple of other elements that the bid will 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 offer out. Um, one of them is uh, the goalposts that Bree talked about, that doesn't necessarily have to be in here, that can be a cost that we bear later or elsewhere. Uh, there's also a question about the lines, they talk about, they call them cuffing. But, so you can either paint lines on your turf and they wear off, or you can stitch in colored lines, right? And so, we uh, we anticipate putting a given number of sports affixed permanently in different colors. So that our athletes understand which color to play against. And then we have, for the last decade, we've been painting in some of the other lines. We would ask for the consideration that some of those painted lines be permanently tufted in. But that's a cost that we could, that we could back out as well, so we can make other things possible. But right now, the upper end of this, for instance, the TPE would would, it would appear from our estimates, it would drive us. The eight hundred thousand was in the CIP, certainly didn't anticipate some of the cost increases that we've seen in the most recent weeks. So some of this stuff will be challenged, but I think what's, what we start with is go in and asking for and anticipating what you want. And what would be best for our student athletes, our community, and then we'll talk about it when we get the results.
Okay, Liz, one final question. Uh, uh, the uh, chrome rubber is what we have right now, right? But obviously, this is very small granules, so do these all come in different sizes, or chrome rubber just because it's recycled or used is just kind of. Very excited, but maybe they're all consistent?
Those are pretty much what you would get.
Okay, and then um, my uh, question is, uh, before we put in a shop pad. Can these be heated so that um, that. I mean, if we're gonna go through this whole renovation and whatnot, maybe a same amount like five months or ten years, I guess. Um, can these fields be heated and what's that possibly?
So they are, I can tell you that Yale has heated field. Um, there aren't many heated fields in the United States, so there are, there are. Many heated fields in uh, Europe, Europe is ahead of us by, you know, a couple of generations. But um, but it is taking immense amount of energy to defrost a field.
Okay, alright, so we just do a way around electric, you know, our electric building.
It can, and in fact, um, this pad, you can see these runes in the pad, they have a similar pattern, they lay electrical tape in here. Electrical heat lines in here, um, this company actually makes that. It's not very much used, I wouldn't necessarily want, of course, with the test case.
But we said before, the problem a lot of it comes to the, the black color.
It has a natural radiant effect, exactly.
Alright, can I, and also, Anne, Anne, Anne?
Alright, I understand it takes four to six weeks to build this. What did we have in mind? But when.
Our execution is that we would, we would certainly not get in the way of school, graduation, and all of the end of, end of year season, end of year ceremonies, et cetera. And we would go at it, hopefully, as long as, you know, vendors, you know, we can get on schedules, we'd go at it immediately. We would probably lose the majority of the summer to consumption of the, of the field, but we'd absolutely put it back into play. I think the phrase was, we'd be arm wrestling the football team, because they'd be looking at, get on that.
Well, as we're planning on the championship graduation, we're rolling.
Yes, and then these are much in July, and hopefully done early in August, as soon as we can finish spring sports by August.
And and to, and to the point that summer usage that we normally get out of the field, do we have any kind of agreement with the. Department or community campus, or where where's that play gonna go? Where are you limited?
Well, you also have to realize, we have grass here, grass field sitting behind the. So we can, we can shift to there as well.
Okay, I have a suggestion, how about Kenny and Zach and Nathan, come back to us with your suggestion. And your cost, and we'll consider that, I mean, I don't know how other people feel, but I feel like I don't know anything about this. You know, it's it's not in my purview, so I would like to suggest that you guys come back to us. What you think would be the best, the safest, what you can plow it, you you know, those five things that you said. How about if we do that, can we do that for our next meeting? Come back to us with what you think is the best plan.
I think, I go, I go back to what it's for, if we, we need to pick, I think the big bottom point, that we, I don't think a great feeling. Would be if you said, we are willing to forego widget usage. In order to pursue some non widget friendly infills, then that, that we go back, if we don't hear that, there are some.
I think we're not.
No, that's, that's okay, so so if that's, then we're gonna go back to hearing things that allow for choosing some.
By by memo, by memo, I think I could, we could address what we anticipate the final instructions are if we design the, we finish the design specs to go to bid. The ultimate costs, we won't ultimately go out to bid, what we were looking for is, we wanted to narrow the focus a bit, so that the scope wasn't too broad. And get an effect of our three people together, and so, um.
And and the plan would be to save close to that eight hundred thousand a squad, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, so I think by way of memo, we could, we could summarize, and and I didn't put those, I should have put those five. Five, I've I've got those here, but I didn't put them in your memo, they're not public. I think by way of memo, we could introduce that publicly and say, based on this criteria, I didn't hear anybody at the table. Propose that there were other major priorities, so we'll do that for, we'll do that for next time and and uh, and then we get sufficient grants.
Okay. I have one other question from uh, from the, from here, I guess, I I was thinking, I mean, with these drainage systems and whatnot. Um, first, I would be gonna, like, once you get in there, will we have to update the drainage system possibly? And then as sort of the um, like mold and whatnot, like black mold or anything, do you have to worry about any of that with them, you get money starting pads in and layers and whatnot?
Not necessarily, no, no, we have one of the best. Um, one of the best things to solve black mold, do you relate?
Okay, so even even underneath the layers and.
It hasn't vanished.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on on our agenda, the next item is.
Really, Reeves, um, just the key, key thing is that the memo uh, from uh. Kathleen Water, that connected, connected with the policy committee, uh, and as part of, we. We get the policy board in with the CLE, we've effectively ran a conversation uh, around the fact that. The existing board COVID policies, uh, definitely in light of the technical dynamics we've seen from the state. But even before that, the district practice related hadn't been adhering to those policies that were developed in the first. It really hadn't been practiced anyways, so uh, to clean things up, and if it sparked something, you know, by the, by the. We had a conversation about it, it's time to pull those back. So anyways, you will find those in um, in the, later the package, um, but that is a whole set of COVID policies.
Oh, Nathan.
So, I put a, I put a cover sheet, I put a memo uh. To try to give you a sense of what's known, who's and what's noise, and so I guess I would just offer up a thirty. I want to take any questions that you might have. The ELY, which was the June thirtieth, with the transition and everything going on in our summer meetings, I didn't bring that to you in August, I could only would have. So I wanted you to see, that's the underlying support upon which the MS twenty five, the daily twenty five financial reports that I had to sign. That's what they were based upon, and then uh, your, your September month end is there as well.
Does this mean we gave four thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars seventy points back to the city?
That's it, yes.
Any other questions? Oh, okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Margot, great, um, I've included in here is a little memo. Which just catching up the, the, taking a look at regis, period, period over, it's an item. Last school year, it was originally added when we were seeing. New development in the housing room, so we were trying to come back to this district, take a look at our numbers. To analyze whether we were in a situation for next year, or to be very clear, for just entering school year. From three twenty, whether we were in such reach to redistrict. The data that the new district working group looked at is also provided in the packet. And the summary that the majority of it was came to was that, and looking at the numbers. And comparing FDEs and consideration of um. And our bussing costs, we came to the this, the conclusion that we not represented to the superintendent that redistricting. Necessary for one three twenty four, we would also like to make the recommendation that the new development. On the Beverly Hill Road, be re-s, redistricted, reassigned, sorry, to the. Anybody has questions on that? Thank you to Margot and the working ad hoc committee for putting the time into this, um, so thank you all.
Right, Nancy, I'm on the committee side.
Um, yeah, I just was trying, I I looked at the the data, obviously, Portis fifth is, you know, still predicted to go down. Right, as far as it will. Um, but of course, you see all these buildings going up, so I'm not sure what to believe. Um, did anything, I, the the piece that I'm missing is, like. What's the capacity of these buildings, and what's sort of the, the teacher to student ratio?
Those are great questions, so for math, I mean, I mean, it may never, it takes what you define it to be. There's fire code, it has to be, of which at the high school, we could carry another five hundred fifty students. At the middle school, we think one hundred students, and we would go up to over five hundred at Little Harper. And on Darrell, we're in three's now, so we are not near fire code. Concerns at all, in terms of teachers' student ratio, we're well under what we require, what we say in the contract, which is already well with the state. So I think the state requires twenty six, it would be wrong if we say twenty, and we're under that in all of our classes, so. We're in, we're a good place currently, um, on that, and then Zach would go further on that, but that was something that we discussed and and wrote the history of. Back when Dunder, we had five hundred of that. Um, but we still. And to your point around.
Alright, let's let Liz talk, Liz is the. Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
From the, um, and it maybe is out of the purview of this, but did we ever look at the buildings from an equitable. Equitable standpoint as far as the the ratio differences, I know that it sounds low for all of them, but are they? Again, it's sort of out of the purview.
The only thing I can say is, is um, the three neighborhoods that that always come up in have been equally divided, those are three schools. So um, and that's as far as the data that we have available to us is. Um, at the moment, we can't, I, we don't have the state data on clean income, average per school. Um, it's not something that we can, I I, that has not come up as an issue. Looked at those three elementary schools, they're, I wouldn't say they're exactly the same. But I wouldn't say the differences are so drastic, that it would warrant an immediate work, right now.
So I would say broadly, with the current, interesting, uh, in my, um. When doing my, listening to more stuff behind Ross conversations, right? When you talk to people at each of the different elementary schools. Um, it is almost universal that that folks are convinced that the other school has a better deal than them. And and it is, and so, and they'll point to specific examples as to why, it's like, well, there's a assistant principal at Little Harbor, I mean, we don't have an assistant principal. Those guys have a title one person, we don't have that. They've got this many, so why, one of the conversations that I've had with uh, um, the elementary folk is going into budget season, one of the things. We need to kind of have that, an understanding of this equitable staffing, what is it? Because what happens is the conversation, kind of the, this kind of conversation tends to be in these little silos, where they're taking.
Kind of the this kind of conversation tends to be in these little silos where particular arguments fit. I think people's needs for my building needs more things. Uh and I'm not saying any of those people are doing that malicious way or whatever, but they're looking at particular. Particular things and it's like, and I keep having a lot of yaba conversations. Yeah, but you're saying a shortage here. But you have three more of these other things of the other building they're worried about doesn't happen. Um and so one of the things I wanna work on is with budget season is really mapping that out. And talking about that because it definitely is a thing I know the board's been worried about. And then families talk about it all the time. You know, it's perceived as qualities between buildings, which might be real qualities. Uh but I would say it's not as clear as some people at the moment would like to. Or or to.
Any more questions, Frank? Sure. Okay, Liz.
Uh I just wanted to speak to I abstain from voting in the committee. Um and the reason why I abstain is I did wanna hear more from. Zach or more particularly admin about um the situation. And so I understand numbers are helpful and numbers can paint a picture. Numbers maybe could tell us that we could wait another year, but my concern was similar to what you were getting at, I think, Brian, in that. Um I'm, you know, from a, you know, having known Don Darrow particularly and having had more conversations there. I guess I was concerned that or have been concerned. Or would be concerned about the fact that um some rooms get converted to be classrooms that could be other spaces such as. Um you know, uh having a a bigger, you know, this is just the random example, but like a bigger art space or whatever. But more particularly, I guess, would be the uh the special ed services um and other service providers and what space do they have? To provide services or to have office space and whatnot. And so I'm concerned in some of these spaces that um spaces that were. Previously used for things like O T may have been shrunk down or or cut to uh be classroom space. And so and what size those classrooms are. Um so I don't know, you know, as far as a bigger conversation, I don't know if that's something that we can look into and have that conversation. Um you know, before the summer or at some point. Um I also um in that conversation, I think when we talk about equity, it's not just the financial piece. Um it's also um you know, the demographics of our population and uh where are people moving to in our community who. Are foreign foreign language speakers. And I think one thing that had come up um when I was running for school board was the fact that. Um you know, certain interpreters or ESL folks were having to come in to certain schools and provide those services. And providing space and supports there for um those students. So I definitely wanted to hear more from admin. Um on that. And then the other piece was um that Little Harbor um. Was a little bit low and Don Darrow was, I think, it was somewhat even compared compared to what it was before. Um and so the talk was to have new development go towards Little Harbor. My concern though. Is that um you know, you have this huge section of apartments on Route One that all go to Don Darrow. There's more apartments being built. Um and those demographics going to Don Darrow. Uh there are other apartments, obviously. Uh but having these newer developments, even though there's talk that this newer development may not even have. Um children, school age children um moving to it because of the uh community guidelines or whatnot, but uh. I guess I'm a little bit concerned with having new houses always go to Little Harbor or have Little Harbor be perceived as like the south end, bigger houses. That sort of thing and how that demographic affects people. At the same time, you know, if certain services. You know, you you wanna obviously, you know, we're not in a situation to have busing, obviously. Um but I lived in North Carolina and there was busing. Um and so, you know, you wanna be able to have that cultural diversity. At every school as well, but also be able to provide the services. So I'm hoping that maybe we can have a broader conversation. Um about this and hear from admin and, you know, maybe some of their concerns are valid and and it might be their.
I think you I think I mean, I wanna. Do you feel the superintendent say he's gonna really look into this when it comes to budget time? And if Don Darrow needs something that they want on Little Harbor.
Yeah, but everybody says their opinion and I'm telling you. Say you have to spend my time. You wear it by.
I'm saying for the end, he was examining all of those issues that you just brought up. He stated that before you started to talk.
But I also.
Okay, what was next?
I I just wanted to clarify that Brian had mentioned like um the data of building and yet we see a lot of building around us and since. Liz touched on the fact around building restrictions that. We need to also understand that the information in which we were provided. By local builders and by real estate agents of what's going up around our communities. Um is not catering towards bringing in families into Portsmouth. So I think that's very important for people to understand as they say, well, I see a lot of building going up. That building, for example, the uh the the place that Liz was um. Discussing they specifically, even though they are priced in a family price range. They are deterring families from moving in by not allowing fish shards or play equipment within that building construction. So I think it's just really important for people to understand that just because you see a building going up or just because numbers are going to another school. It doesn't mean that that's guaranteed that there's and and then I also just wanted to say that I want us to be very cautious as we're talking about. Um international families that move into our community. Um just because we as Americans often gravitate towards a large residential home. That is not the culture for everyone. So I I just wanna caution us in making assumptions about who may be moving into the apartments, what their income may be. What their educational level may be, um and that they're not in any way shape or form comparable. Uh to those people that's moving into large residential homes.
Okay, and I'd like to ask Margot to kind of keep your eye on this for us. So if you don't mind keeping your eye on it and if the admin needs to come back, that would be great. Zach.
I'm just gonna pay it kind of to to feed off that. Not the uh the um. There's the Brian. You force it. It doesn't go there. It's very interesting to watch. We're watching one of the decisions of the planning board is making. Um and I've gone back and watched some of the videos and it's very clear that those fifty six homes. Were specifically designed by both the um. By both the developer and the plans were altered by city to to try to make sure that families didn't go in there. Uh and so and it's and it's and so and some of that was based on there were choices. I think some of that conversation appeared to be choices that were environmental questions uh because. And certain way in which things wanted to be developed, but I know I had an ongoing conversation with some um. Uh who was it? Who was it? That was the business um a couple of different business groups back with the high school. And that's been part of that we've been talking about is is what's gonna happen in terms of our. The the people who are moving into newer development in Portsmouth are not bringing cameras. Uh and so that's gonna be having impact on schools as that as we continue to sense of decline in terms of student population. The economy is a scandal. What we're gonna do in terms of programming will start to be affected unless we unless we request more contestations to maintain. Um the quality program ever now. The other big issue that I keep having is around workforce housing and our own workforce. Because if you go into our schools and sit at a table with our folks, uh and you ask like, hey, how long have you been here? I think I so so they have eight people around the table. And folks are going around and somebody was like, oh, I it's my nineteen year. It's like, well, you're the new one. You know, it's like twenty five, thirty. And a lot of those, a large portion of our current events and staff live in town. And are part of our schools in a different way. So it's all that. Our newer staff will not be able to afford the limits. Uh so at the moment, uh and if development needs to work, we can all self work. You're gonna have people who live around us in satellite communities to drive into town and drive out of town instead. Uh and so I don't have an answer to that. I I I don't know what the answer is around that. I know though that I think. It's gonna change the character of your schools uh in a bunch of ways. And it's one of those things that could sneak up on you. Uh and all of a sudden. Your staff is very has a very different relationship with your schools, kids, the community uh as a whole. Um so I'm gonna keep having those dialogues and I think it's one of the kind of time and I don't know how we weigh in on that conversation about. Who as Portsmouth kind of turns over and who it is. Is there still a place for families to come and be part of Portsmouth? Uh and and if and if not, then we need to be smart about a long term planning on that.
And and to your point, um I don't think Margot brought this up, but we discussed it heavily in our meeting, uh just those points. As well as why that's another reason to delay, not this year, but to delay looking at redistricting. Because of looking at workhouse forcing housing, I'm sorry, uh developments that the city is considering. What that may do to the district, to the equity of our schools. Um so it just didn't seem to be the right time because of reasons.
I brought up a concern that the homeless population, not like, obviously, we have the homeless population across where it says. But we also have a shift in housing where um now there's the the moratorium is lifted. And so people, I think families are they end up moving into apartment complexes. Um you know, off every one or 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 uh of those options versus um you know, people with kids versus. Uh other demographics. Um and so I did wonder, because in other areas, there's same shit, if we would see any of it here too.
Thank you, Liz, for making that comment. Brian.
I'm sorry. I I think this can get kind of old and I mean, it sounds it sounds like. Redistricting to me makes sense not to talk about it anymore, but. Um it's part, you know, part of this strategic strategic planning that you guys are talking about, we're all talking about. These seem like topics like long term, where are our teachers gonna live? Um we even talked about. Uh childcare help for maybe smaller teachers and and then all the equity stuff can be examined there about how the schools are. If you have three schools and maybe we're we're talking about maybe less at some point, if that's the case, I'm gonna order that. Yeah, so I think it should all be wrapped up in the valley.
Anyway, so. I kind of hit the most of what I was gonna say, but you know, there's one thing that I think about this for us, what I think about is in school, with you. As people, we want like some more financial challenges with housing. There are some school districts that take another look at what that might be in terms of keeping that's in their original school. I don't believe the last time I looked at this that that was a huge problem. Um but if it does start to affect a larger number of kids where they're in a system where they might be out of district more often. I just would like us to keep an eye on that.
Good point. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Thank you, Margot and Liz and Paul and and and. I'd like to thank, I believe, such a great job of putting this together. Thank you. And she also, you know, got the gentleman bar meeting. And we discussed all of that. And then I was mentioning the fact that, you know, people think oh, three hundred in their school, but five hundred was the percent on Darrow. And it was bigger than the middle school at that point. It's at that point that.
Okay, let's move on. Um. What made it? Okay.
Yes.
Yep, so we are, um this the sexual harassment policy in front of you, the exact same one that you had last meeting, it was first reading last meeting. So this is second reading. There have been no changes until the last meeting to this meeting. So do I have a motion for the approval of second reading of policy A C A C? First, second, and the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion absent.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um following suit with that, as I had said last week, when we introduced the new policy, which again had. Um many more steps for investigation and um more defined language. It meant that the current policies that we as Portsmouth have like G B A A and J B A A are no longer necessary. So those are on there for elimination because they are being replaced by A C A C. So I would like to take those into like the groups. So I would like a motion for the elimination of policy G B A A and J B A A that they will be replaced by policy A C A C. Just that.
So. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then lastly, as um Dr. McLaughlin was saying, the next set of policies were all of those that were written during the pandemic to respond to the pandemic during. Those um times since the state has no longer declared us in the legal, we are no longer following many of those policies. Because the situation has changed and scenario and movements have changed. It would be the recommendation of the policy committee to eliminate higher section and then the related policies. So I'd like to take those as a group and would ask for a motion to currently elimination of section two. Which includes policy Q A, Q C, Q C A, Q E, Q B A, Q B A A. Q D A A B, Q E, Q F, and Q F A.
I'll let you. The pandemic's over.
Yeah.
So I'm not. Not in actual fact, we haven't had the pandemic.
We have no policies on.
They we.
Yeah.
Proceed.
We have to fight that are being worked into other policies that we currently have. I'm trying to be clear on that. You're still already very.
You're going to write a new policy that will cover.
Exactly, the policy committee is working on new policies.
And then change many times.
Exactly, and how they are deemed and not applicable to the current. Let's go then. Thank you.
We have a motion to eliminate the COVID.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, second. And all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um can you just say that again for me? I think I what I heard is the policies are going away, but. Internal procedures are happening and what?
So we'll still, I think there's a little bit, I mean, we're still working injunction with the Department. Um and um the Department of Public Services uh to. You know, to be in line with what they're what they're doing. I think the challenge. And we, I mean, the what we got in terms of that technical advisory that came down from the state. Uh from the Department to school districts, I think was a surprise. Um. And uh. Oh, we adjusted effectively, you know, it's under things we've been a lot of no longer only do our legal interpretations. You know, I have a right to stay, which was around testing and asking for tests before people come back. Uh we're still advising, I mean, effectively what we're to we're back to in terms of this. You said you should stay home. And that's kind of where we're at. Um. So but if things change, now I then I don't know what happened within Hampshire on this, but I would say in my last in Vermont. The most part, we didn't pass, it weren't as detailed set of policies. Typically, what happened was it was a procedural level. So administration was empowered to to make sure that we were in alignment with. The E C, the Department of Health and whoever else. Um and then that allowed flexibility because it kept changing. It allowed the, you know, it allowed basically um the legislature to then keep changing and putting out more. Putting back the board and form forming the board about what's going on. Um uh because one of the challenges, you know, that was moving too fast for 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 people. And that's a challenge that that's one of the things where and I totally get from a uh as a superintendent. I appreciate that moment in time of a guest that was like here, like it was everywhere else. For a board to say, we need to back our administration, say, we empower the board, we're saying these things that we're gonna do. Which members of. Um they think it's smart, uh but. Um but it also it also shows weakness of of when, you know, when a board tries to get down to a procedural level, they can't shift them too fast. So, yeah.
So I guess that leads me to my overall question about this and the concern that if the New Hampshire guidelines change in the next few months. Then like, do you feel like the staff is empowered to uphold those without a policy? Like a clear policy that we follow D H S guidelines on this?
Yeah, I because I feel like it said, everything had been told. When I walked in the door, I said, where is our COVID policy? And people, and they be at this kind of, I think, basically, it's like, well, we follow the C D C, we follow Department of Health. So uh that. And um and that was a marching order that I was given and that's what we that's what we were doing even while on the books with these other things. It said we were doing something else.
Well, when the T D C and the the agency split, and so we followed the D H.
And and the end of the state of the city. Uh so um so I think it allows. I'm comfortable that you're gonna have our collective backs if we're doing what you're asking us to do, which is to follow. The direction of two agencies that are also the schools and health, but the Department. Which is to follow the direction of two agencies that are also the schools and health, but the Department of Ed. And then, uh, instead of Health and Human Services. Uh, I would say what was interesting was in the lead-up to the technical guidance. Health and Human Services was giving us one set of kind of responses to best practice, what we were asking people to do with best practice. And then in the wake of the technical guidance, they shifted their language overnight to, those are right language. So the, the bureaucratic identity is on the same page and, and we're not in opposition to each other, so we follow.
Okay, can we vote? All in favor? Of COVID policies?
Oh, sorry, didn't see me, but. So would you come back to the board if at any point you feel like you need a blanket policy? You could say, don't want to put our district in a way where we have CDC over here, you know, and this, and DHHS over here, and they're not connected.
So I.
The science is emerging on this, whatever our other opinions are, I think we can agree that it is constantly shifting.
So at the moment, what, how I interpreted what I, that split, because I follow state level stuff, that's what I'm following. Um, I'll continue to, continue to do that until either you all tell me, we'd like to have a conversation about what not best, of course. Uh, or I come back to you and say, I, I am concerned based on what these, that if it's hugely different. Um, you know, I and staff and more people that I'm dealing with feel like we, we might want to reconsider whether that's the appropriate approach, I'm gonna back to you, for you to go on record with that.
Carrie. I would just, like, I don't think that there's gonna be changes in the next, you know, couple weeks. So, but would it be reasonable to ask the policy committee to think about, uh, very brief policy that our COVID policies are, we are following the recommendations of New Hampshire DHHS? So that that could be revised. I guess my worry is that New Hampshire policies get more restrictive and more on the CDC page. And then there's gonna be backlash. Um. But.
Things will be interesting, I mean, it's gonna be dynamic, because as we move into, we get, we get to the black, we get the election thing going on. We're gonna get the cold thing going on, and everybody going back inside quickly again, and lots of ventilation. Um, so who knows where we are with the vaccine. So like, that's, you know, so it'll be an interesting set of stuff. I think right now, I feel comfortable with the commitment, being able to do my job and have conversations with people who, which I do too at the moment. Around and letting me know that I've interpreted it okay. It's like, if we're okay, that's where we're at right now. Uh, you know, Department of Health, Human Services, and we actually will follow.
I'm just pulling, sorry, I do believe that um, some of the areas where we discuss sickness. They're gonna, I, I believe they're gonna roll in DHHS guidance as a, as a line. And so a lot of the ones that were in there, travel, things like that, obviously we're not using that anymore, but things such as cleaning facilities, that we already had policies related to that, then we developed a whole separate set that were specific code-related. So the language is already, we were already covered in, in one part, but I know what you're getting at, is this, is this reporting and attendance and how such is through the school, so. We, 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 it's policy committee that discusses, there's a place for where we can either expand language if necessary. Or to your point, designate a home separate. If necessary, uh, uh, right now, based on what the nurses and that are saying, we don't feel any separate, etc., is necessary right now, but we're able to pivot if necessary.
Thank you, I will stop talking. Oh, that's okay, me too. Um, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Or you asked? Okay, what's next? Tuition rates, you want to talk to this?
I would just tell you very simply that we have an area agreement that essentially spells out, take prior year actual costs. Back out those things that are important and specific that the area, area should not pay for, meaning SE fifty. And divide over last year's enrollment. So it's, there's more, there's more steps to it, but that's fundamentally what it gets to. And so each year, I bring you the tuition rates according to the formula. For information's sake, the upper category of rates are simply from that DOE twenty-five, which is the state's financial report that we submit to them, and it calculates. Those may be tweaked a little bit by the Department of Ed, and when they are published, we would switch to those potentially. Uh, but the area tuition rates on the bottom are what's that matter? I think you'll see that the rates increased marginally more than what we had estimated because the enrollment at the middle school and high school both doubled year over year, where the elementary rose. So, uh, when you divide by the enrollment, the attendants, it, it has a, an exacerbating impact. I've already had a conversation with a superintendent in Greenland about the, uh, SE fifty about. Uh, and given a draft of this report for their planning purposes, but I put that to you for your vote.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the, um, tuition rates? One more second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have. Consideration approval of the RFP for the strategic plan. Again, I want to thank Lisa and Hope, no, Gary and who else? Thank you for your hard work on this one. Lisa, do you want?
Why can't I, I can walk you through, and I, and I, I didn't want to say, you know, I did want to, I had the same thing, I wanted to thank people. Uh, and, um, and Lisa for coordinating us, because I, it was, we were very efficient. We got a lot done, took our time, the combination of a couple of meetings and some, uh, online work. Uh, so what you, um, what you have, uh, I think you've seen two, I want to give you a couple things that we got the feedback on, there were some changes that were, um, there was some typo stuff. Like by nineteen, okay, line nineteen, and add a space, and there's a couple of typos that we'll take care of. What we're most interested in is getting kind of exceptional approval of what, what people produce. But I do think we had already talked about some changes that were not included before, which included a stripping down, kind of different challenges. Stripping down of some of the things, trying to think about how we, it was more subjective. Like the stuff, it wasn't like database, some, um, uh, things, and so that would potentially, in this, if you want to make it an adjustment to what opposing lines seventy-two, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, and eighty-two. Would all come out. Uh, and I think born of the idea that let's let some of those, some of those things that aren't just like black and whites. But we suspect, let those, if they're gonna appear with those, those organically appear through a process, that those are actually challenges.
And that was some feedback from some of you when you reviewed the statistics that are shortening.
Shorten that down to section, let them, let those things come to the surface on the road. Um, then, in addition to that, there were, there was one, we had gone back and forth on, and I realized that that I didn't fully understand what the, what the SCF was, and now I'm getting it. As a result, it was a change. It was around communication, um, plans, and there's inside of the scope a little more. On one oh six, we vaguely make a, vaguely make a reference to a conference of communication plan, what that might look like. But what I realized when I went back and looked at some of the comments from you guys was, there was a specific request, and what left about one of the deliverables for the plan should be that we're gonna have a different communication plan, it's already one of those. But separate from that was that, that the vendor should help us be thoughtful about communication for the strategic plan process. How are we communicating to, how are we communicating stakeholders, uh, in the, in, throughout the process and then into the rollout? How we, how, how we thought we're doing that work, and that is deliverable makes a lot sense. But I didn't understand there officially, so, um, something. So I, I would suggest without, I hadn't talked to any of us. But that is something that we would add, I mean, deliverables, and I have some really lousy language, uh, to do it.
Okay. So I mean, I think if people are in a group, which adding that, um, you want to move that, because we had under the scope of work. I think to have a transparent process with regular stakeholder updates, which in some way vaguely.
Yes.
That's a good. I think that's separate.
It's not as a deliverable.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear on the.
So I was one of the people that did put that in.
Yeah.
Uh, so maybe I wasn't clear, but to my point, my point was, it's great if you put it in the scope of work, but if you don't hold someone accountable on the backend to the deliverable of it. They, they don't owe you that in their scope of work and, um, you're still billing to that. So, hope number one oh six, do the liberal.
I think it's not one of them. I think it's what, what would, what's the one that's transparent, one from the scope of one?
Well, I don't know if we want to move that, but I think that's exactly what Hope was saying.
But one of the things in the spirit of what would lead to a deliverable, which would be this.
Some sort of deliverable around transparent communication throughout the strategic planning process.
As well as a communication plan that allows going into an annual operation. Like you want it to be able to be operable, and how are you gonna communicate that out to, um, to your stakeholders?
Talk to me more about that.
Yeah. So once you have a plan, you have to operationalize it.
Yeah.
How are we gonna communicate that out to stakeholders in the coming, like, I'm just gonna say year, I know that we're at three to five year plan, but you have to start with year one.
Right.
So how, when you go from, okay, now we have a plan, we're gonna take it off the shelf and we're gonna operationalize that. How are we communicating that out? That these are the new things that we're going to put into our district according to our strategic plan, right? And this is how it's, you're going to see those things play out in our district.
Is that, so what I was saying before, I was thinking about it two ways, maybe I missed any content. So I was thinking two ways, one is it'd be good for vendors that organized way that they, they'd say, here's how, as we're going in, we're doing, first, well, when we first come in, good, how we're gonna communicate with COVID. We are about to strategic plan. Here's why we strategic plan.
That's right.
Because what we're trying to accomplish is what it looks like. Then, then another round of communication, we're gonna do focus group, good, why we're gonna do focus group, empower, we're gonna.
All the methods.
All that, all processes. And then on the tail end, also help allow the rollout of the plan is now complete. Here is the plan, and here is what we're gonna do with the plan, sorry.
Yeah, this is how we're operationalizing what we've been planning.
We're saying a communication plan during, to a communication plan during the strategic planning process and during implementation.
You're talking about, yes, a full spike. So we're.
I, I, so I do, I want to have more first minute time, Lisa.
Well, I think what Hope was saying is you'd like that as deliverable, so that's spelled out, and I do think a few other people mentioned that idea. I think the one thing that came up during the committee, the concern about mission creep with the deliverables, and I'm not saying whether or not this Twitter wouldn't be one of them, but like too many deliverables.
No, I mean, I think, I think, uh, Charon was a good example, like, I mean, he brought up the point of like, one of their deliverables, one of the outcomes, which is one, something else I brought up, this, like, we don't have them listing, what are the outcomes you're gonna receive, right? One of the outcomes, if you hire Charon, is going to be, we're going to give you a communication plan so that when you launch, right? It, it's, it's a layout of how do you launch, and how do you do that with all your stakeholders? So how are you communicating out to your parents and to your teachers and to your students? In year one.
So I took, the, the creep, I thought was around, maybe I got this wrong, so I apologize, but I got everything wrong, go on. Um, the, the creep was more around like, let's say you had like four, the idea of being like, there's like four pillars of plan, that if one of the, if that this could potentially make automatically one of the four pillars, it's like communication plan. And it's like that, like, no, we don't want to do that. Like, because that would then, if you're already pigeonholing, you're already crafting it a way where automatically one of the big outcomes is already predetermined, basically. I mean, then when I reread it, then I was like, no, this is more about process communication and then rollout communication. But that's, then, then it's not a mission creep.
So if you know. Hope's on our head, Josh, you had to hand them.
Um, yeah, I think I misunderstood what Hope was asking for. Are we wrong to, to, to say? I mean. What you're saying is you want to make sure we communicate about the strategic plan, the process, and the implementation. Effectively, and you want that to be a deliverable.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I interpreted it as a, a, a district-wide communication plan. Like our communication committee was gonna come up with, so.
Wow, that's a whole.
Yes, that's why we thought it would, that piece might come up during the project, but I, I didn't know you were speaking about.
Well, I would think that was, would come up in the project, and I would think that we would want that to come up in the project. And I would think that that is something that we would want as an outcome. I mean, I can't imagine having a strategic plan that doesn't simultaneously have a communication plan alongside of it, that is just frankly, from a professional consultant, that's, that's enough. But, um, I, because you, you want to jointly have something that you can communicate out. Because if you don't have body in from your stakeholders, it doesn't matter how good your plan is.
But you're, but you're still just talking about communicating about the plan.
I'm talking about communicating about the plan.
Yeah.
Isn't that, and the deliverables under recommended advisor, talking structures dashboard, that allows stakeholders to easily understand our progress or be tuning in to strategic goals?
I mean, we thought so, but I don't think it matters that much too specific about communication, that it's important to add it.
Okay, Karen, I want to. I want, I want to bring up one other thing that we talked about in the committee, and that was that our number one goal for Zach was strategic plan. Number two was communication. And so, uh, like, yes, we want to see all of these proposals have that, but there, but it's, we, we don't want to be saying communication is our issue, communication is our issue. In this plan, we want that to come out, even this RFP, we want that to come out with the crew. And we'll expect, I mean, I think any of these plans would have that, the, the effective communication as a measurable deliverable, I don't quite, I don't think we're there. So I think we thought that bullet point addressed it, but also that those communication plans shouldn't be totally separate from our district communication plan. So if Zach and Patty develop a new, or, or standards of like, this is what we wanted to go out, and this is how it's gonna go out. We then don't want a group coming in and flipping all, that all around, so the strategic planning communication looks totally different than what we've developed in, in the meantime.
I, I don't understand why we were to ask our superintendent to develop a communication plan before he has an understanding of what the, the strategies and goals are that we're moving towards, because that's gonna be part of the communication. So to me, it doesn't matter if Zach and Patty do it on their own, or if they use uh, a consulting firm to work with them. If integrated in the strategic plan, you would want those things to go hand in hand, and you would want those teams integrating and working together. So that it's seamless. Because if you have them doing one thing and something else over here, and there's a gap in between of what this, this consultant finds in stakeholder information, that maybe Zach and Patty didn't go out and get before they put together their communication plan, then you're gonna have gaps. And so to me, if we are a wise board, we would be integrating those two processes together.
So can you give us some language, what would you say, oh? Will you, you would put it into deliverable?
I would put under deliverable for communication, yes.
Oh, and how would you say?
How exactly would I say it? I, I mean, I, I'm not on the committee, so I don't want to first wave for any, I.
Well, no, I mean, I think that's the point we're at, because I think we all felt satisfied with that being the communication plan. So we, we had a lot of discussion about it, this is what we came up with, so we would need that specific suggestion.
Okay. So, um, I, I think I gave you some language.
Yeah, I think, if you're fine with us going back to the committee and just going back with something, my understanding is you want to make sure that there's transparent communication during the planning process. And during the implementation in terms of what we're doing to roll it out and how we're measuring progress and achieving.
Certainly within the first year. Okay, and the reason I say within the first year is because I understand that if what you're asking from a consulting company, they're gonna charge you, right? If you're saying, hey, I want to fully develop.
So actually, we can add, I think we can add language on that.
Um, I don't even know, Lisa, that you need to add anything, if I look at number. Um, I don't even know, Lisa, that you need to add anything, if I look at number line one twenty five. I would almost just refine what support means, maybe be a little bit more robust in that line. Because the communication required, the support, maybe just take that and.
So that was a a question about whether the board was going to want to ultimately pay the consultant to provide implementation services, which Nathan must ask for. I think it's a great idea, and I want Nathan to give me all the money, but. A little bit of uncertainty about how we're gonna weigh is the board, the cost of that.
So to try to. Which why I asked for is a separate bullet, I appreciate what Patty's saying, but I don't want to. Integrate it if it's going to limit the understanding that we are looking for a company that can support and come along implementation.
But we can definitely go back and we can add in the.
No, we don't need that.
Deliverables to agree, I just, it's not a big deal, so.
Okay, so can we, do you feel we can vote on this then?
Um, I have a couple of more things, and I raised them to.
Okay, Liz.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about this, and I I understand you want a feedback, but I I had more questions than sort of feedback, I guess. One of my questions was, um, in doing this, I guess I had hoped that, uh. Like businesses within the community or some sort of understanding of the community and the needs of the community. Of like into in integrating that within our schools to provide, you know, you know, meeting. Employment needs or whatnot, is that in this somehow, or or could this be inserted further?
It's a.
I can just speak to that. That's not for us, either as a board or a staff to determine that as a need, that's sort of what we're paying these people. Boku bucks to come in and say is being able to talk to the community and all the stakeholders and determine if that's where we want to go and. What if that's one of the the goals.
I guess where would that fall within lessons?
So we did get your feedback, oh, two pages of it after the deadlines is submitted, we still incorporated it in here.
I'm just saying, we're like asking where it. I'm not saying everything is either, I just have two questions.
It was like line ninety six inclusion of all stakeholders. Um, blah, blah, blah.
Well, you guys are wondering if we can add businesses in there.
And I community, you know, many members are business, but like this is not like a line edit, this is just to conceptually say we substantially missed, like we didn't. Ask for a diverse process, and you wanted us to do that, then we would add that, but we don't need to go through the document line by line.
And I think we want to be really careful that we're not, and this is what the committee discussed, is we don't want to. To narrow ourselves in so tight that we shouldn't be paying them, we should just be sitting around this table writing it ourselves.
Yes.
We are trusting that they have the expertise and the ability to get to the larger community in a way that. Would be more organic and more reflective of the community than we could do ourselves.
So there's something that we say that in here, that we have.
Read line ninety six, ninety seven, ninety eight and ninety nine.
I understand, I just don't think that that includes businesses, it's not saying, like, it says community member, but I guess I'm sort of wondering if maybe we should expand just to make it clear that that's the direction we're going in. And then my next question is.
I'm gonna say no, but.
Just, you know, if somebody were looking at this, I guess. Um, it's it almost expands the scope a little bit, I would think, but uh my my last question would be. Um, the other focus that I had was that the fact that we have this P program. And we want to put more um focus on early childhood, and we also have grades that go beyond twelve, especially with community campus. Um, kids can be receiving education up until twenty five, I believe, so I, you know, twenty three, twenty one weeks. Thank you, all right, thank you, so um so. So but I haven't finished. So it says K through twelve curriculum plan, but I guess I just want to be clear in what we're asking for, but we also want to look at that. Um, approach here.
Okay, thank you for your comments, ding out, and then Carrie.
I was just gonna say, this again comes down to that same idea of each one of us at this table has different. Uh, personal interests and values and desires, and this whole plan is supposed to be bigger than any one of us, and it's supposed to get to that large community without. Predetermining where we want it to go, and that's really hard to wrap around writing this um request for proposals is. Has to be broad enough that it allows the work to be done on its own without a preconceived notion of what the end result will be.
Well said, well said.
I understand that, I guess my only thing is that in the point in here is that I think the school department has obligations from age three. To age twenty two, and so I just want to convey that within the document.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Okay, Carrie, you had her hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna try to say with that, I mean, if you put every single thing we want in here, that was very much a conversation. You don't get any flavor for what this company is, what they believe, what's important, and so I think that's the piece of like, I think as a committee, we're asking for like. Move this forward, we're gonna, they're gonna come to Zach and Patty, they're gonna get reviewed, and then, you know, they decide the fit. And I think what you're gonna get is just a revegetation of the RFP. If we put every single piece that we want in discussion, I think there has to be some things that are not. Are open for interpretation, otherwise they're gonna copy paste, so.
Okay, good point, good point.
I suggest we move to vote.
Right, you too. Yeah, um, okay, let's vote.
Okay, well, I I have a few things that I did put in that did not get addressed, if you want to go for a vote, then I can't.
Okay, a point I didn't like. But can you say quickly, so we can move on?
I can drive. Um, so I have mentioned um inclusion, I appreciated that there was the overall ask of scope of the work, but I did not see. An inclusion of timelines, sequencing of steps of the work or the resources. That they would be asking for from our district or the resources that they would be providing. That is something that I would recommend including in asking from them when you ask for. Um, their overall approach and profile. Um, that was online, sorry, that's. Let me go back.
I know, I'm looking in the contents of the post, right?
Yes, and so you're trying to put my comments to you and.
No, I got it, and I hadn't.
You basically, uh, if I recall correctly, asked for the company to provide their approach to strategic planning. And what I was asking for additionally, it's not just their approach, but to this particular project, what do they see in terms of. Sequencing steps. So you would first be asking for what is your approach? What would be the sequencing steps of your approach, what would be a timeline for that, and then what resources would you be bringing to the table? And what resources would you be asking for from the district? And I don't see that as a as a request, I think that's beneficial information when you're. Gathering information from a consultant and it kind of leaves things, the expectations that upfront. Um, the other thing that I had wondered was the scope of uh thinking about. Once we get the RFPs in, reviewing those and thinking about the efficiency and the effectiveness of the work of a strategic. Maybe twenty pages, very long, so I was curious as to how we landed on that number and pick that. Um.
Line one thirty seven.
Yes. Create for a more effectively. Clearer written RFP. Well, it can help, I think, move the process along as the committee is coming through and looking at information.
Um. Carrie, did you want to say something, or Lisa?
So I was the one with the page number thing, so I.
Okay, express that.
The twenty, so typically when you see a twenty each limit and a grant or on an RFP. It's including the narrative or it's specific to the narrative, we've asked people to do twenty pages for all of this, so budgets may be four pages. Um, their organizational structure may be two pages, it's like, you don't think I, we could take out the page numbers if we want to, but I don't. I I guess I just, um, that's sort of where we stuck with that in our discussion.
Okay, I I would just say in, I guess we're in different professions.
Yeah.
Do grants, and I commented to that to Lisa, for grants, yes, but I mean, in all my consulting work of business and philanthropy grants, I. Twenty pages, that's a that's a long. So I guess it depends on how many, if we're gonna bring every single one to the committee, I just try to think.
I don't think I'm putting a committee together until after we've selected events, correct? It's already funded by Zach and Patty. And so if they want twenty pages, I feel like we leave it, if they want it upon hearing this, consider changing the page length, and I think we certainly.
Okay. I'm not married to that, I just think it's a a consideration of like how well.
I think it's twenty pages for Zach.
And I mean, my experience was one of my, just the most recent one was doing equity audit, RFP, um, stuff, and, you know, we. That rejoined up and we see stuff. Eight, nine grand each, um, and we did get some, we didn't have a page load. So we we did get some of like the seventy five page thing.
Yeah.
But but, you know, fifty three pages of it, or about even sixty five pages of it. Were appendices and demographics and promotional material. On the most part, we just kind of.
I don't doubt someone can provide you twenty pages.
Yeah, 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 no, but it was like, when you get down to, there there, you know, a lot of the. The additional stuff, my experience was a lot of the additional stuff, it's kind of the fluffy promotional.
Right.
And thing that you got, that was tapped on to the four to five pages of like real stuff. But there were times, but there were things that were in the the tack on that sometimes were important, and it was like, oh, I like their. I like their, um, I like their uh theory around methodology, that they really stowed out what they just. With demographics and whatever, but I wouldn't have gotten. If I just went for, if I just hit the smaller core kind of executives, I mean, like the. So, um, so I I don't know, my. I'm not that worried about it, because I think you you can very quickly call through, like, what's the fluffy? Nine.
And so where do we sit on the. Ask for timeline and resource, wait, my, why was that? What request?
I'm here for an exception E, Hope, just so everyone knows.
Uh, line one sixty, is that the second?
Did you, you asked, no, you asked for online one sixty four, so that is in section E.
Yeah.
To add a little bit more detail there specifically around.
Yeah, it's the project.
Sequencing to incorporate a sequence and timelines along with resource considerations from their team and from the district. That was some Hope's suggestion.
Instead, so instead of it's an organization of the project. Um, I think it would be an addition to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I might not understand. Um.
It wasn't necessarily on sixty four, I just said in section.
But in that section.
Yeah, in that section.
If that makes sense, Zach and Patty were doing the interview, and I'm fine with slipping that into that section. That's easy enough to.
Right, this sounds.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Think we can vote on this? We have a motion to approve the uh our review for the committee coming from the. We'd be discussed.
Yeah.
And one other thing quickly, it's also being reviewed by legal and finance, they've been mistaking that process, so there may be some changes to the very end of the document, you know, under reclamation of rights and proposal packages, it's all just. Requirements, and so if he comes back and says we need to change that, I know, Anne, you want the date, that'll come once we're all done, but we'll have a date. Oh, no.
And I just want to say thank you to Lisa, I mean, I want to thank the whole group, I know everyone put time, but. I I know she's very humble, and I know she did a lot of that, Patty, you were in the writing, uh, thank you.
I want to say. I think I'm about to say one we first.
No, okay, with so little.
Okay.
To the problems, thank you.
Paul, favor.
Do you want? Matt, did you want to share any timeline at this point, or you're gonna do that in a memo later?
So I mean, I have worked, I have a document, it's just a concept.
No, just in terms of when you hope to publish and when we hope to find.
Well, I think we, it depends, we're a little. Because I think we had had a conversation around the possibility here next Monday, pushing it out. And we still have to do a little bit of work that Lisa was referencing with the city. So, you know, Nathan and I were talking about this for the meeting, might not be in Monday, but I think so, my hopeful suspect is next week.
I think that's great. Okay.
That's a little bit.
So we're pretty much don't have time. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, everyone, many updates, so anyone?
Oh, so, well, I haven't gone to a meeting, but you have an update, well, that's not true, Lisa and I. Met with Zach around the communication, the communication committee has not technically had a meeting. Um, but we did meet to discuss a bit of the communication committee, um, and walked away with. Looking in the short term, I think, imagine us, us time, the communication committee would be potentially uh looking to help with communication plan or edit up that. Um. I personally would like to put on the agenda for. Next meeting or coming up meeting, uh, discussion of the communication committee. Um, the purpose is it going to. At the board, does it need to be resolved? Uh, dissolved, um, and also kind of widen the conversation to how we come about developing committees on this board. Um, and what their purposes are. Um, so I guess my update is that, um. To no disrespect to our superintendent, but we're kind of at a standstill, uh, and it just.
Are we at a standstill?
Or a standstill, because she owe me. Information of like actually a date to meet, um, as a communication committee, and.
Okay.
He said there was a draft plan coming and maybe we need to edit that, that was my last understanding.
So I, my my intent is to create a draft plan and to not meet with the committee to create one. But I would create a draft plan to share with people, to to keep them up. Uh, so, I don't have that draft, um, and I. So I'm, I'm sorry, it's. Feel like I, I didn't question that that was gonna be done in a certain way, in a certain time, I guess.
No, no, it's not an apology, I just know that we were, my understanding was we were coming up on deadlines in November around communication plan, so. The only reason I'm bringing it up tonight is because. This this committee has been looked at. Many times by the board as, um, oh, that can fall under the communication committee, or, oh, that has to do with communications, so the communication committee is. Dealing with it, and I just want. The board to understand that the communications committee is not meeting right now, we aren't involved in any communication in any way within the district, and so. Um, in respect of everyone's time on the committee and respect for. Zach coming in, because this was a committee he inherited, um. I think our conversation kind of came at a point of like, do we need this committee? And that's not a decision that can just be made by Lisa, myself and um our superintendent. So I do think it warrants a conversation, and I think there, personally, I think there are people on the committee that feel like there's places that the committee could be helpful. Whether it be a strategic plan or other ways, I think our superintendent pointed that out, um, but if it's not, then. I'd rather see that we just dissolve it and we live on, because. Well, number one, it is a communication committee, and so bad communications, probably, but also, um, you know, we don't. I I've always preached, we don't need community committees that we don't need, so.
Perhaps you should bring it up at a at a board meeting and have the board discuss it.
That's what I'm asking, can I put on the next.
But whether we need that to do it completely or not.
No.
Okay, so we'll bring it up on on to the general.
I was just gonna make the motion to dissolve it for the time being, and if Zach.
I would say for me to dissolve, I would like to have the conversation.
Okay.
And I would like Zach to be able to have the opportunity if he wants to use the committee to use it, or. If he doesn't feel like that it's a supportive need, then then that avenue for discussion.
So we just talking about committees in general, and the ones who want to run it and take the minutes, so we have that slideshow prepared.
Right. Presenting the agenda.
Bring it back, into your presentation.
Okay, we can do that, definitely. Um, thank you for bringing it up, and.
I I wanna, I'm I'm sorry, Zach, it's no slight to you, this has been an ongoing, like, committee that's signed. It's not totally supported, kind of.
Well, that's why I was bringing to the.
We need to discuss it as members of the. I think you brought us some really good points as well in our meeting. That Harry decided to pass.
Okay, you will do that. Any other committee reports?
There would be just committee meeting, unfortunately, I had to work, so I had to go again, and this was the thing is, uh, there wasn't, uh. Board was elected, there's. So, um, major updates, but I know, but I haven't gotten the minutes back, and someone said, you, I'm happy to give a report or just anything, uh. That's a flag there, but it seemed to be a pretty straight course, yes.
Okay. Okay, Nick, do you have any news for us?
So, um, student council is progressing along nicely, uh, we got a successful spirit week, um, and we're looking to elect class officers, I believe, this Friday, so. No, nothing like enormous to report, but things are going well.
Very good. Any other anything from the teacher, in respect? Any other things from the teacher perspective?
No, I, and they're all issues that everybody is well aware of, we're still low staff, we need subs desperately. Um, we need those support staffs, te- teachers are stepping in, they're doing wonderful things and I appreciate you acknowledging that because I think as a group, we all. The love right now, um. But it's not anything that any is not aware of and it's not something that's very.
Thank you, are you enjoying the board so far?
I am, and actually tonight was my last night of middle school volleyball, so that was extremely fun and actually it plugged out to parents and other staff out there, I was so nervous taking it on as one more thing. But it was such a different way to get in touch with our kids. Uh, and just seeing pure fun of like the little things, uh, when the kid gets served or. I just, it's a really adorable thing and I know that our after school, um. Clubs and sports, they need leadership and it can come from all places and so. If you know friends or other people who just have a little bit of time, it was much shorter too than I was expecting. So we need people in love with our kids to to give our teachers great.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, okay, do we have anyone else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Future. Yes.
Oh, we got the community, yeah, we're done on all of this. Yeah, and I have a few other things to talk about tonight, so.
I just wanted to make sure that it's at some point, like through the tap, you know, district wide of testing, all the stuff that, you know. And, you know, it's getting close to December, I imagine that's when you would. Be able to present something.
Anyone else? Okay. No, not that, okay. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn. So, okay, nobody wants to adjourn. Unfortunately, for.